Go ahead.
You all set?
Yep.
All right, I'd like to call the June 22nd, 2020, meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission to Order. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. LaFlem.
Mr.?
Mr. Scrubutinis.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Okay, um, uh, next up would have been minutes. I know that the planning department just about had them ready, but we wouldn't have had a good time to review them. So we're going to hold off on the May 11th meeting minutes until the next meeting, and hopefully at our June, July 13th meeting, we'll be able to get caught up on minutes, okay? So we have no minutes for tonight's meeting to prove. Um, we have no public hearings tonight, so we're going to move right to privilege of the floor. And as usual, Ms. Robertson will coordinate, uh, the privilege of the floor. Now go ahead, Laura.
Okay, thank you. So I, I'm just gonna go in order of, uh, you know, the requests that I received. And then I do have one comment to read, and then I'll open it up for anybody that is on the line that wishes to speak that I, you know, didn't write down. So the first person that I had a contact with is Connie Trigger.
Hello, can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Hi, everybody. Uh, I'm Connie Trigger, and my husband Paul and I live at 4072 Windsor Drive. Um, you may notice that tonight, to be time efficient, we decided to have fewer of us sign up to speak tonight. And those who do speak will be representing the more than three dozen families in the Windsor Drive area who have come together to strongly object to a vehicular cut through from Windsor Drive to River Road with or without a crash gate, and many of those residents will be watching this evening. Uh, I've spoken to you a number of times now about this cut through and the many issues it will create. Tonight, I want to narrow my focus to aspects of your resolution and supporting report that are troubling to me. Just has been discussed about the comprehensive plan, the planning board's report has its own inconsistent inconsistencies that did not, do not inspire confidence. In the agenda package posted on the town website, the proposal that you are voting on is accompanied by a report and many pages of rationales for your choice of configuration. We've talked about how the contradictions in the comprehensive plan have caused problems and confusion, so I was disappointed when I saw them in your report as well. Near the beginning of your report, it is claimed that the proposal the planning board is putting forward supports the objectives of the comprehensive plan. The points that the comprehensive plan committee co-chair chose included the connection between Van Antwerp and River Road via Windsor Drive is specifically identified as an opportunity to improve traffic circulation and arterial management. Another is promoting interconnect, interconnectivity in street circulation design throughout the town that should benefit the entire residential population, businesses, and neighboring communities, and completing a connection between Van Antwerp and River Road via Windsor Drive that is specifically identified as an opportunity to improve traffic circulation and arterial management. I want to pause here for a moment and point out again that there are sections of the comprehensive pan, plan that support connecting only with a multi-use path and that caution against traffic planning for traffic's sake only. To name just a few, and so we can keep them in the front of everybody's minds, in the implement, an implementation task of the Edison Woods neighborhood is complete the extension of Windsor Drive to River Road with a multi-use path and connect to the bike path. On page 37, it says extending the Windsor Drive multipurpose path to River Road should be a town priority. It goes on, "The recognition of multi-use paths as important non-motorized vehicle links connecting residents with work, school, and shopping." It says, "In no instance should transportation planning be concerned with transportation services alone. The road and pedestrian network is a key factor in the safety, social workings, and visual impact of a community." And there are others also missing from your report, but let's get back to your report. So having those objectives from the comprehensive plan being cited would lead the reader to believe that the planning board's proposal to include a cut through is meant to benefit not just the Windsor Drive neighborhood, but all Niskiuna neighborhoods. It states a need for connectivity between neighborhoods to parks and the town center overlay district. However, this is immediately followed by a list of methods generated by various committees as examples of ways to limit the amount of non-neighborhood traffic using the cut through. Hard twists, bends, curves, turns, weight limits, a stop sign, a boulevard entrance. So the plan you've come up with is to put in something that drivers from other neighborhoods can use as a cut through to reach, for instance, the town center, but you want to design it so that drivers from those other neighborhoods are discouraged from using it to reach the town center. So if the cut through is for the neighborhood, but not the non-neighborhood, and you have received ample evidence that the neighborhood closest to the cut through doesn't need it and doesn't want it, and committees have put conditions on its completion that don't contain any scope, design, timeline, or budget, what's going on here? Is it just paying lip service to the comprehensive plan, or the town map, or a short stub of paved road? And I worry that the real plan is to find a way to open up the road to vehicular traffic. Within the same port, report are other inconsistencies that aren't reassuring. The requirement for traffic mitigation on Windsor Drive is described in one section this way. "The planning board is recommending a gate be placed to prohibit a vehicular connection until such time as the town's budget allows for traffic calming treatments in the neighborhood." But in another section, "Traffic mitigation as a condition" is described in much less, a much less concrete manner. Provided a crash gate is installed, which would prohibit traffic until the entire Windsor corridor is examined for traffic calming treatments, potentially implemented, and approved for opening. So at some point in the future, if there's a crash gate, and the question of turning into a connection is brought up again, which phrase will a planning board possibly made up of different members pick? The "traffic calming treatments are made in the neighborhood" phrase, or the "potentially implemented" phrase? It's okay, and even wise, and you have the power to look at the comprehensive plans, master plans, official maps from the past 50 years, and using the information that has been learned since their creation, like traffic studies for the Rosendale Roundabout, the traffic study for the cut through, the reconfiguration of the middle schools, the hundreds of additional residents that have been built, continued development in downtown Schenectady, and say, geez, that's not a good idea anymore. We're not going to require that the developer include a feature that will adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood and include a condition that will have to be, have to be paid for by the town. We have a better idea, based on data, neighborhood feedback, observations about change in the surrounding areas, and a shared responsibility to keep expenditures down. Don't put in a vehicular connection. The introduction of the comprehensive plan says that it represents a snapshot of the town at a particular time, and should not be used as a sta, as a static, but rather as a dynamic policy instrument to be modified as needed to reflect changing conditions. That same section warns that new development should not compromise the integrity of the surrounding neighborhoods. We are asking you to use the comprehensive plan to maintain the integrity of our neighborhood, and recognize that what might have seemed appropriate seven, or 17, or 30 years ago may not be the best answer today. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Connie. Um, the next person I had is Art Pescarello.
Laura.
Hello.
I'm not speaking this evening, I'm just listening. Thank you.
Okay, sorry. Um, Daniela Degali, are you, are you speaking tonight?
Hi, Laura. Yes, thank you, that's all right. Um, hi, everybody. Hi again. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to speak and share some additional thoughts. As I read the information provided in the agenda packet for the meeting this evening, I was struck by the fact that you were considering abiding by planning that is more than 20 years old. As Connie alluded to, in some cases 30 or 40-plus years old. If business owners and companies ran businesses or made decisions based on what the world looked like more than 20 years ago, they would not have viable businesses today. With so many changes in the last couple of decades, it is difficult to understand why anyone would just try and connect lines on a map, and not realize that the neighborhood has changed. I have mentioned this before, but it is worth repeating. How is it that the Constitution of the United States can have amendments, but the comprehensive plan is set in stone with no regard to the Windsor Drive of today? At some point in the relative recent past, someone looked at this area and decided it could be a residential area, and therefore all of these houses were built. What made sense long ago no longer makes sense today. You can't turn back time. I have not seen any data regarding the benefits of a connection. You have clearly stated the emergency access is simply a way station and having a full connection. You have not been able to provide any tangible or quantifiable benefit to creating this connection. What the planning board keeps coming back to is an outdated comprehensive plan that does not take into account people and changes in landscape or use. The elusive term connectivity should not be a reason to disrupt the lives of so many and create safety and traffic issues, not only for our neighborhood, but the new neighborhood that is being developed. Regarding the secondary access for the Kelts' development, there is no code or law that requires a particular length of a cul-de-sac or additional access, as per the amended statement sent following the last meeting. There are dozens of locations within a half a mile of Windsor Drive that do not have secondary access. If you really wanted a second access, there are other connections that could be made out to River without connecting to Windsor. We have data evidencing major traffic increases and value deterioration. In terms of the value deterioration, we have heard you state that the paired sales data and general market knowledge opinion letters are not data, but when you have professional opinions from experienced licensed appraisers who have been in residential lending for decades, as well as corroborating statements from knowledgeable real estate agents, stating the value will be adversely impacted significantly, and you ignore that, or cast it aside, it appears that you are choosing to ignore the information instead of seeking to understand it. We have submitted the best data and information available because a customary appraisal cannot be ordered. In regards to the traffic data, major traffic mitigation would be necessary in order to guarantee safety and in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. This cost could be a burden the taxpayers of this town would need to shoulder. Any cost is too much of a cost, given it is a cost to the town that does not save the residents any time or provide any measurable or quantifiable benefits. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening, and again, we ask that you only consider a multi-use path in relation to the new Kelts Farm subdivision and Windsor Drive. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Daniela. Um, is Soma Day, are you interested in speaking?
I'm, I'm not speaking tonight.
Okay, I'm sorry. I guess I got that wrong. So I know Doug is on the line to speak under privilege of the floor. Doug, would you like to go?
Yes, thank you, Laura, and thank you. Thank, thank you, board, for giving me an opportunity to speak. Um, this is regarding 2520 Vincenza Road, the project add-on. Uh, I guess we're, we're down to the short strokes on making a decision, may get a decision tonight. Um, but I did want to say this, uh, before I get into the few comments I'm going to make, I wanted to give, uh, Laura Robertson a, really a shout out for her good work. She has really been responsive to us neighbors, and she's really tried to give us the information we've, we've required. So thank you very much, Laura. Now, um, just a couple things. We've engaged a lawyer by the, uh, real estate lawyer by the name of Christine Meyer, and she has visited with your Kim Alexis, and they've had some discussions, uh, visited by phone, I believe, not, not in person, but by phone. And Christina has asked Alexis to consider some changes that we want with respect to this declaration. And specifically, um, we, we want a little more precision in this agreement, and, uh, because what we're concerned about is, and this is part of the process of learning, we didn't realize, I guess, until, maybe it was too late, that there's a big difference between a, an approval of a minor subdivision and a major subdivision, and that falls on us neighbors. We, we should know. So we're concerned with this declaration that, uh, there, um, there may be an opportunity to, after adding four houses, maybe there'd be an opportunity to add a fifth house without going through a full stormwater pollution prevention program, and, uh, and all the other things that go with a major subdivision. So I've asked Christina to engage with Alexis, and we'll see what happens with, between the two lawyers. That's all I really want to say on that particular point. Um, the town designated engineer had, had some outstanding requests of the Lisi group, and, uh, I find that, uh, those, those items have been addressed. Um, uh, this had to do with the roof, the roofs on the houses, the discharge, where that water's going to go. These are huge houses, um, 4,000 square foot plus, so there, there's a lot of water's going to come down off those roofs, and off the sidewalks, and, and the driveways. But that has been, um, we think that's been, been addressed, so, uh, great. Um, I also, I, I see that, I believe, and if I've read this properly, that the Lisi groups agreed to, um, pardon me, pardon me for a moment. They've, they've agreed to, uh, with, and I believe this is true, that, uh, connecting an underdrain from the bioretention basin they proposed behind house number two, uh, to the, the Niskiuna storm system, stormwater system removal system. And, uh, I think that's, um, a good thing, except we do have some issues, as everybody is aware, that we have issues with stormwater removal, and we've had some, uh, very exciting times, uh, on this drainage creek, which is on the northeast side of Row Road. So, um, it's like a two-edged sword. I think the underdrain is a good thing, but the, the question I had is, did, did Mr. Steenberg look at a larger bioretention, bioretention basin? And because that might be a better, might be, I'm not a civil engineer, but that might be a better way to address this problem rather than taxing the stormwater, existing stormwater system. But in either case, I think that's a, something's been done, and I, and I appreciate that. Uh, the only other thing, I guess, uh, that I wanted to mention is, and this is, uh, you're probably tired of hearing it, but, uh, a lot of us believe that there's, we have climate change, and what that means to us neighbors here is that we're going to get more violent and severe storms, which means I think we're going to get more rainwater, and then having to dispose of this rainwater, stormwater. And I don't know, uh, if the, how Rick, while Mr. Steenberg's work looks somewhat rigorous on this subject, I'm just wondering, uh, really, we talked about 100-year storm, uh, but I would argue that we might have, in the future, due to climate change, we have, 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 we may have more than just 100-year storm. And we've seen some really, in the 35 years that I've lived here, and many of our neighbors have lived here, we have seen, there definitely more stormwater, uh, being generated, and it's not been adequately disposed of, in my opinion. So that's, that's really what I had for tonight, and I, I don't know whether any of my other good neighbors are on, but I, I'd very, very much appreciate any comments that they would care to make. Thank you.
Hey, Laura, can you hear me?
Yes, Coon, would you like to go ahead? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I, I thought I was going to miss this. So I just want to, um, um, echo, um, what Doug said, that we really appreciate your responsiveness. So I just got your email this afternoon, and, uh, I am pretty, um, I guess, uh, I understand your explanation. I guess I'm still not 100% sure that the town has the, uh, the authority, I guess, to interpret what the state permit card would consider a common plan of development, but that's something that I think Doug had mentioned, that he had received someone with the legal status to look into that. Um, I feel I should know, but I really don't know. Uh, I don't know whether there was a timeframe that we can put on a, um, development like this, that, uh, would put an end to what we would consider as a common plan of development. So that's what the declaration, um, is speaking to, and I appreciate your explanation. Now, I understand that that's not the same as the major subdivision trigger, and I understand the major subdivision trigger is still on the plate, so that's good. Um, one, I guess, uh, oh, I just want to say also thank you to all the, the board members, too. I think you guys had listened to the neighbors' concern. A lot of the things that we talk about, you did try to address to the extent you could, and I understand in some cases, um, you know, you can only do what, uh, what the town co and the regulation would allow you to do. And I think that, uh, Mr. Lisi had, had somewhat, um, uh, come to, uh, um, uh, some compromise with, uh, our neighbor here, too, so I, uh, do want to acknowledge that as well. Um, there's one last thing I just wanted to mention for the town board to consider. I read over the resolution, and I noticed that the resolution for tonight's final approval did mention the de-restriction, which is also on the plate, and so that de-restriction for those three lot is going to be, um, I guess, uh, recorded together with the plate. But interestingly, it didn't mention about this major subdivision. Um, any additional, um, houses still on this property would be automatically triggered. So I thought, I don't know, is that an oversight, or that it doesn't need to be mentioned because that's a part of the plate recording process that is going to be in the official record anyway? So I, I just want to point that out, and if that's an oversight, then maybe you would just add that one additional point to the, um, the resolution, that any additional house added to this, uh, development would be considered as a major subdivision. Um, and I guess I would just leave it at that, and, um, thank you very much for all your help.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't get who that was, because all I got is a phone number, Laura. Who was that?
Oh, that's Coontang.
Hey, thank you.
Okay. And then I saw Norm on, let me just see if he's... Yeah, Norm, do you, are you interested in speaking under privilege of the floor? You're muted right now.
Hello?
Yep, there you are.
Hi. You asked if, oh, no, I, I'm okay.
You're just listening? Okay.
I'm just listening.
Okay, thanks, Norm. Um, I'm going to read a comment that I received. Um, this is a letter from the lawyer that was retained by Doug Fadden, on the Meyer Law Firm, P L L C, to the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission regarding the four-lot subdivision 2520 Vincenza Drive. Lou Lisi and Alexandra and William Spencer Booth to be read during privilege of the floor. Dear Mr. Chairman and Board Members, I represent Douglas McFadden, who resides at 1388 Row Road, New York. Mr. McFadden's home is in close proximity to a full subdivision. Mr. McFadden and several, and several other neighbor residents have expressed deep concerns over the applicant's planned development of the property because of insufficient stormwater management. As part of the application process, the applicant and owners made certain representations to the planning board, and based upon said representations, the board determined that a full stormwater pollution prevention plan, SWIP, was not required. In order to maintain eligibility for the basic SWIP, the applicant, the owners, the stormwater management officer, Joshua Hawley, and deputy town attorney Alexis Kim entered into an agreement entitled Declaration of Intention Regarding Future Construction of Activity on Lot 4 of the Proposed Four-Lot Subdivision of 2520 Vincenza Drive, which the party signed June 3rd, 2020, June 8th, 2020, and June 6th, 2020, respectively. The declaration sets forth restrictions on further subdivision of lots, and addresses the circumstances under which a full SWIP would be required. My client was not a party to this declaration. A copy of the signed declaration is attached hereto as Exhibit A for your reference. In my opinion, the signed declaration, as written, omitted contextual information and other pertinent language which would aid with future interpretation of the declaration should the need arise. In an effort to eliminate ambiguity, I have proposed changes to the declaration and ask that the party sign a new declaration which incorporates my recommendations. A copy of the proposed declaration is attached hereto as Exhibit B. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. And the letter does contain Exhibit A, which is the agreement that was signed and attached to the planning board's, um, agenda statement, and then it includes Exhibit B, which has some textual changes that add some of the clarification that she was talking about in her letter, and I can distribute it to anybody who's interested in seeing it. Um, that is all I have for privilege of the floor. Um, if, is there anybody else on the line that I didn't call at once to speak?
Okay, looks like that's it for privilege of the floor. All right, so we'll close privilege of the floor, and we'll move on the agenda. Uh, next up is unfinished business, which we have none, so we'll move right to new business. We have a few resolutions tonight. First resolution being Resolution 2020-15, a resolution for final approval of the four-lot minor subdivision at 2520 Vincenza Drive. Now, the resolution and all the information was posted to the town website as usual, uh, but I'd like to, um, read the conditions that go along with that, summarize, uh, just because, you know, being the video for anybody watching that has not pulled the, uh, the agenda statement. So, so basically, this resolution tonight, uh, this planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant minor subdivision approval for the four-lot minor subdivision of 2520 Vincenza Drive, as shown on a map entitled Preliminary Pla, Lou Lisi, Four-Lot Minor Subdivision, Town and Niskiuna prepared by Brett Steenberg, P E P L L C, and dated January 2018, last revised January 22, 2020, subject to the following conditions. Condition one, the Declaration of Intention Regarding Future Construction Activity on Lot 4 of the Property Four-Lot Subdivision is attached to this minor subdivision approval and included as a condition herein. Two, prior to recording the plat, the developer shall work with the Town of Niskiuna Legal Department to transfer a small portion of property to the town to address subdivision frontage requirements. Three, prior to recording the plat, a street, street tree planning plan shall be submitted to and approved by the Niskiuna Tree Council. Four, prior to recording the plat, the deed restrictions for all four lots shall be provided to the planning department for review and approval. The deed restrictions are required to be filed jointly with this subdivision plat. Five, in accordance with Chapter 180 of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town and Niskiuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion sediment control measures, measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the superintendent of water source and engineering, and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established, established. Six, should the garage floor elevation for each, for individual lots deviate by more than six inches from the elevations approved for construction by the planning board and zoning commission or the building department, the revised grading plan shall be submitted immediately to town engineering office for the review and approval. Depending on the impact to driveway slopes or drainage features such as squalls and berms, revised grading plan may need to extend into the subdivision-wide grading plan to ensure impacts to adjacent lots are accounted for. Seven, wetland boundaries shall be recorded and shown on any plot plan of a building lot containing wetlands. Wetlands may not be disturbed, drained, or physically altered any way without first contacting the Army Corps of Engineers. Additionally, the Town and Niskiuna requires that no land can be disturbed within a 25-foot buffer from the boundary of the wetland. Eight, prior to site disturbance, applicants shall participate in a pre-construction meeting with the Town and Niskiuna and town designated engineer, and shall address any concerns raised by the town. Nine, prior to site disturbance, the subdivision map shall be modified to reflect the agreed upon decisions of the pre-construction meeting, if any, distributed as required to the town and all involved contractors. Final site plan shall be submitted to the town labeled for construction. Ten, prior to pre-construction meeting, any engineering and drainage concerns will be addressed to the satisfaction of the town superintendent of water source and engineering. Eleven, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any questions or concerns raised by the town designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town. Twelve, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any minor textual changes to the subdivision plans will be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planning department. Thirteen, prior to final certificate of occupancy, for any of the three new homes, the applicant shall sign a stormwater control facility maintenance agreement in excess season, in order to ensure the proposed stormwater facilities are installed and maintained for in order to ensure the proposed stormwater facilities are installed and maintained per plans. Fourteen, the limits of clearing of this subdivision shall be strictly adhered to during construction. To the maximum extent practicable, the applicant shall retain as many of the site's healthy trees and native vegetation as possible. Stormwater being directed into these natural vegetation areas will slow down and absorb runoff. So any future accessory structures or clearing permits should evaluate the impacts of stormwater runoff in the context of the overall subdivision. Okay, those are all the conditions. Thank you for your patience. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, Mo Oster, I just need to announce that I'm not going to participate in this vote.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Oster. And Ms. Gold will be the board member participating in this vote. She's been handling this project all along due to Mr. Oster's refusal. So do I have a motion on the resolution twenty twenty fifteen for Vincenzo Drive?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the resolution's been moved for adoption by Mr. Scrub Uteness. Do I have a second?
I second.
Yeah, who was that first there? I know Leslie was in there, but.
It could be Ms. Gold.
Okay, Ms. Gold. All right, it was seconded by Ms. Gold, Mr. Henry? All right. Okay, we'll have some discussion. I do have a couple of changes. So maybe I'll start with those first, okay? One is, we did receive, as Mr. McFadden pointed out, a response to the Weston and Sampson, the town designated engineer. We did receive just, you know, today, basically, the response from the applicant, which basically, just a quick look at it, agreed with the findings, final findings of the town designated engineer. It incorporated those changes into the subdivision plan. So we need to modify the resolution. I got it all written here in this pile of paper somewhere. We need to modify the resolution to make sure we reference the correct plan. I got it here somewhere, if you'd bear with me. And it was neat. Shuffle all the papers and I lost it for that. So Laura, you can help me out. So it was, let's see. So we have to modify the first whereas and the first resolved updated to the plan, which is revision is six twenty two. Let me just check them notes here.
Oh, did I have the wrong ones? Yeah. Instead of June.
Yeah, you sent you sent the word document out, Laura, with the correction.
Well, that was for the Celts farm. That one was for the Celts farm.
That's for the Celts farm?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let me double check the date on this one while you guys keep talking.
Yeah, let me do the whole check here. I tried to print out just things I needed, and of course, I got them all in a pile here.
Yeah, that's the beauty and the terror of the virtual.
So I'm going to pull up my planning packet.
Yeah, so actually, it is incorrect date. The one that is attached to your packet is five twenty eight twenty, so we should make that modification. Although, it's kind of up to you guys. I mean, I sent it out to you, you know, like a couple of hours ago. But there is even a further revised one that incorporates some of the updates, which Brett can talk to. But we can either reference the one that's in your packet, which is five twenty eight twenty, or we can look at the new one that we got today.
Right. The thing is, the new one incorporates the latest response to the comments.
Yeah.
And it basically, the only thing that would change in the resolution is just, again, that first whereas. And I believe it was the first resolve. Those two locations, we just have to change the date to six twenty two, and then we have the latest package with those response. Does that seem reasonable? I mean, there was, there wasn't any disagreement from the applicant from the town designated engineer. It looks like things were just incorporated, the comments that were put forth by Weston and Sampson.
Yeah, I mean, it would be my recommendation to actually go with the one that was changed on six twenty two. That would be my recommendation because it's more complete. And it's like drains and stuff like that.
Okay, and that's my proposal, is that we modify that to six twenty two to bring that up to date and make it correct, okay? I mean, there'll still be a pre-construction meeting, we're still, you know, there'll still be, there's still potential changes. But this gets us the latest configuration control, the latest document, right? Now, the other, that's one, and I'll wait, I'll go through my second one. This, the second one I have is for condition number fourteen. The, the, the purpose of condition number fourteen, usually when somebody comes in for a building permit, I would believe the building inspector or code enforcement officer would pull the resolution. And then the resolution would hopefully trigger them to, if there's any concerns and then if they need to go further into the documentation, you know, pull drawings, pull stormwater reports, whatever, that would be the trigger, would be the resolution. This one states that, that, it's in the last sentence of condition fourteen, that should evaluate the impacts of stormwater. I'm going to propose that we change the word evaluate to consider. And the reason is, is that evaluate, some people feel that implies that a full engineering analysis calculations may need to be done. But that's not the intent. The intent of number fourteen is to basically trigger the review. So for instance, example would be, one of the new homes wants to put a pool in, and they come in to get the building permit. When they decide where they want to put the pool, they better consider the impacts of where they're going to put the pool. Building inspector is going to take a look at that. And if he has a concern, he's probably going to send it either to the planning office or to town engineering and then make sure that there's no impact to the stormwater as designed. Now, if it turns out that there is an impact, they may have to have the applicant perform engineering in order to show that there is no impact of the proposed location for the accessory structure, whether it be a pool or a garage or anything. So it's just a matter of words. Still, the same thing would happen, but I just would like to change the word from evaluate to consider. And that's more consistent with some of our other past resolutions. And I believe one of the resolutions tonight is worded similar also. Have some discussion on that, on those two proposals, the date change and the word, change the word from evaluate to consider in number fourteen. Any thoughts from the board?
I just have one comment, Chairman Walsh. So I think, just for purposes of clarity, I think what it says, so any future accessory structures, I would say that it's only accessory structures that would require clearing natural vegetation. Like if they were to come in and apply for an accessory structure that didn't implicate clearing any of the native vegetation, then the consideration for the drainage wouldn't be triggered. Or unless that is the intent for any accessory.
Well, I don't have a problem with leaving that the way it is. I'll tell you why. Because even if they decide to put up a storage shed, right, they might have to clear an area. And all it would be, you know, and the answer might be, hey, I'm only going to clear for eight by sixteen, you know, storage shed, and there's not any impact. And because it's sitting on blocks and, you know, for whatever reason. And that's why I say consider. And that might be sufficiently enough to allow the building permit to go forward. Now, if they come in with, you know, a twenty by forty or thirty by forty swimming pool with a big apron around the pool, and it's in an area of concern, that that might invoke some more engineering analysis to be done before the building permit is issued. So I'm okay with leaving it for any future accessory structure. It can just be taken a look at, and it would just trigger them to look at the plot plan, make sure everything was okay. But just the word evaluate implies, for me and for other folks, an engineering analysis needs performed. So I'd just like to change that to consider. So I'm going to make a motion that we modify the resolution. That you modify the date to the latest date of the drawing, which is six twenty two twenty, which we just received. That included the town designated engineer comments being incorporated. And also change condition number fourteen, the word evaluate to consider. So I'll make that motion. Do I have a second?
Second. I'll second.
Yeah, who was that, the second that, please?
Mr. Derpino.
Mr. Derpino, okay, that's why I make sure it goes on the record. Okay, so I'd like to, I don't want to say call the roll, but I would say all those in favor of modifying the resolution as recommended, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone, is there anyone opposed? Okay, hearing none opposed, and the resolution has been modified. We're working with a modified resolution right now. So we have any discussion by the board on the resolution or any comments from the public? Board have any comments that they'd like to add?
Mr. Chairman, I want to begin to speak to Mr. McFadden's question regarding the modification of the declaration of intention. How do we, is that something the board wants to treat? Are we going to delegate authority to Alexis to negotiate the declaration of intention?
Well, I can let Alexis speak to that, but I'll start out. We have a signed document right now that's in the resolution. I know that Alexis needs to probably talk to the attorney representing Mr. McFadden. And if there's any changes that make sense, that Alexis agrees to, and then it works with the applicant, I think that they can handle that offline. I know that I did see the comments, and it seemed like, not being critical, it just seemed like some word engineering that, you know. So I'm going to leave, personally, I would leave that to the legal department, would be my view.
Yeah, and I spoke with Mr. McFadden's attorney today for quite a while, and she, you know, very knowledgeable about this. And I welcome her comments. I reviewed them, and they mostly are providing kind of contextual background for why we entered into this declaration. And I had commented to her that I, while I think that they, you know, they do add some context that since this declaration is going to be attached to a resolution, which kind of provides the full background, that I didn't think that they were, you know, necessary or necessarily warranted an amendment to this agreement. The one, this is kind of like the cleanup that I noticed that she pointed out was that all of the representations kind of indicate the applicant referring to Mr. Lisi. But the signatories are both the applicant, Mr. Lisi, and the owners, Elena and Spencer. So one of the suggestions was just to add all of the representations, just add and owners. So it says, like, whereas applicant and owners represent as follows. That's just, I think, a non-substantive change that just cleans it up. The other kind of substantive suggestion was to require that this be filed and recorded together with the deed restrictions. My kind of question back to the attorney was whether or not this would muddy the title down the road since the term of this declaration is only through December thirty first, twenty twenty three. So while I think that point is valid, I do think that it could cause problems for title down the road. So I don't necessarily think a full amendment is necessary. I think if Mr. Lisi would agree to just cleaning up the wording by adding the owners, that would suffice. But I'm happy to, you know, have more conversations. But I think, you know, I kind of cleared up during my conversation with her where we were coming from with this.
Yeah, thank you, Alexis.
Yeah, I guess the question I have on this topic is, if we were to approve this resolution as modified tonight, will, will there be any motivation to actually get those changes made to that agreement?
Well, I don't think that the change, like I said, I think the changes, I mean, I think we could agree to them now to just orally modify the, if, if, if Mr. Lisi is willing to do so, just to add and owners to all of those clauses that are relevant.
Right, so the most functional, the most functional change to me is that exact one that you mentioned, right? Adding also and owners.
So we could just make that as part of the, we could just amend the resolution condition, number one, that incorporates this declaration by reference. We could just say, you know, something along the lines of is attached to this minor subdivision approval and included as a condition herein, as amended to include, and then fill in quotation marks, and owners with respect to presentations made by the applicant.
Well, we do have, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to make sure that was okay with Mr. Lisi before we outset.
I'm fine with that, it's just more informational, that's fine.
Yeah, and I think it's implicit. I mean, you're representing the owners in this anyways.
Exactly.
All right, so.
And I guess the, the second thing has to do with the plot note about the major subdivision triggering the the full stormwater study, right? I, Mr. McFadden brought it up, I just want to reiterate, my understanding is that that is the plot note that we're dealing with. And there's no need to explicitly mention it as a resolution. But I just want to make sure that we say the words and we actually affirm that, you know, on the record of the meeting.
And I've discussed with Mr. McFadden's attorney today, was that kind of what gave rise to this, the need for this declaration is because a larger common plan of development or sale, you know, the plan is defined as like no announcement or indication that you have plans to construct and that the plat note could be misinterpreted as an announcement of plan of further construction activity. So this declaration was kind of meant to be read harmoniously with the plat note.
Right, but even after the twenty twenty three end date of the declaration, the plat note will be understood that any, any additional development on lot four will trigger a major subdivision in the, in the stormwater, everything that goes along with the major subdivision.
Correct.
Yeah, it's, it's on the, it's still on the drawing, yep. You've been carrying that right through since several meetings ago. Any other questions?
Um, I just wanted to mention that the change that Kun was requesting on the deed restriction language, that can be done, I think, fairly easily. I think sometimes when I'm drafting draft resolutions, I know what I'm talking about. But I mean, the condition says, um, number four says, prior to recording the plat, the deed restrictions, I mean, we could put the no further subdivision deed restrictions in there. Just, you know, if we wanted to be clear for anybody who doesn't have familiarity with the project.
You know, okay, sure. Not seeing a problem with doing that. No further, no further subdivision deed restrictions.
And so I'm, to clarify, are we adding the language to number one that says?
Yep.
Okay, so I have.
Wait to see if anybody has anything else that we need to correct, and we'll do it all at once. If there's any other comments on any of the conditions or, or changes. So far, we have two additional changes to condition number one, to add at the end of the last sentence, as amended to, to include the additional, to include all owners or additional owners, Alexis?
Um, yeah, just, so I would think that just for the whereas is clauses. And for the now therefore to add, wherever it says the applicant, add and the owners. Meaning, but, you know, so, for example, it says now therefore the applicant represents as follows. It should be saying now therefore the applicant and the owners represent as follows.
And how about condition number one?
So, so, so hang on, are we, I think, Alexis, which document are you referring to?
I was referring to the declaration that, it just, the amendment to the declaration that's incorporated by condition one in the resolution.
Right, and Chairman Walsh, I think you're referring to the resolution, right?
Yeah, I'm referring to the resolution to condition one, how we should state condition one to tie that all together.
Yeah, so I wrote as amended to include applicant and owners were designated by the town attorney.
Okay.
Which document are you referring to, Laura?
The planning board resolution. So number one would be the declaration of intention regarding future construction activity on lot four of the property or of the property for lots, wait, what?
Yeah, property for a lot subdivision.
And included as a condition herein, as amended to include applicant and owners were designated by the town attorney.
Okay, and then condition number four, prior to recording the plat, the no further subdivision deed restrictions for our four lots shall be provided to the planning department for review and approval. Just add the words, no further subdivision in front of deed restrictions. Is that correct? But I would modify condition one and condition four. Is there any other modifications required? Okay, hearing no one else, and I'll make a motion that we, again, modify the resolution as we just stated for condition one and for condition four, as we just read. Do I have a second on that?
I second it.
Seconded by Mr. Khan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Do we have anybody opposed? Anybody opposed to those changes? Okay, we have no one opposed, so we have a second amendment to the resolution for conditions one and four. Right? So it was a total.
Can I get a question? Yeah.
Uh, no.
No.
No, I'm sorry, but, no, no, we have to follow up later on, we have some discussion, okay?
Okay.
All right, sorry, thank you.
So I do have an additional question before the call for vote on a resolution. And I guess I'm asking this question, so again, it goes, you know, under record. So Laura, for you, for the planning department, as, if you were to approve this and as construction proceeds, and let's say something does begin to go wrong with, with stormwater drainage, what, what catches that? What, what identifies that and brings us back to an engineering assessment in the, in the, in the, in the process? in the, in the, in the, in the process associated with these, with these conditions?
Um, yeah, so typically, um, you know, we monitor sites that are, that have a building permit in place regularly, and we also follow up on complaints from neighbors. And so typically, we'd be driven by either an inspector or a neighbor noticing that something was going wrong. And then, you know, we reach out to the applicant and try and get it fixed. And then if, you know, if we're not able to reach out, or to, to, to contact him that day and come up with a fixing plan, sometimes goes to notice and order, but essentially, I mean, we have a pretty well-laid out path to enforcement if, you know, something's going wrong and plans aren't being listened to. It goes from inspection to notice to notice and order, uh, you know, all the way up to the courts if necessary.
Any other discussion, any other comments from the board for discussion? Anything from the applicant at all?
I know we've had a lot of discussion about drainage, but I did hear the one question from Doug McFadden that I wrote down was, did, did they look at a larger retention basin? And I think that Brett, you had said that you did look at that.
Actually, actually, the basin is significantly larger than it needs to be. Um, from what you would typically require for the drainage area that is contributing to it. It actually is about four times the size of what it would need to be, just because we were trying to minimize the runoff as much as possible. What that resulted in was runoff rates, even with the underdrain imposed or implemented as requested by Weston and Sampson, rates ranging from a hundred percent reduction in runoff rates to, for the 100-year storm event, eighty-five percent reduction. So it, it's a significantly larger basin than you would normally require for, for such a drainage area.
Okay, thanks, thank you for that, Brett, I thought we had said.
Yeah, thank, thank Brett. Hey, any other questions or comments before we put this through a vote? Okay, hearing none, Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. O'Flamie?
You're on mute.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Ms. Gold?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye.
That's it, I think that's everybody, so the resolution is approved and we'll move forward. Quite a few conditions, you know, obviously to work through. I do appreciate all the info we received from the neighbors and, you know, and I think we'll have a, a good project here. And I, I think you did a lot of work on, you know, the concerns and the applicant did a good job, the applicant's engineer. So I think we'll, I think we'll get there and everybody will be pleased in the end, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thanks to the board members for their hard work on this one. Okay, under new business, again, we'll continue, we have another resolution tonight. And this resolution 2020-16, the resolution for final site plan approval for a mixed-use building with the cosmetology slash electrology store at 2220 Crescent Road. Again, the resolution was posted on the website, but I'll just read the, the conditions of this resolution. Basically, this planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant final site plan approval for a special use permit to allow a mixed-use building at 2220 Crescent Ave, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to site disturbance, the applicant shall participate in a pre-construction meeting with the town and Ms. King. They shall address any concerns raised by the town engineer or planning department. One A, final site plans shall consider the minimization of impervious surface, the driveway to the handicap parking space and incorporate any additional drainage required for such surfaces. One B, final site plans shall consider additional boxwood plantings to ensure adequate screening of cars and headlights to adjacent residential homes. Condition two, prepare, prior to the pre-construction meeting, any engineering and drainage concerns will be addressed to the satisfaction of the town superintendent of water source and engineering. Three, prior to site disturbance, the site plan maps shall be modified and reflect agreed-upon decisions of the pre-construction meeting, if any, and distributed as required to the town and to all involved contractors. Final site plans shall be submitted to the town labeled for construction. And four, prior to issuance of a final CO, the applicant shall sign a stormwater control facility maintenance and access agreement in order to ensure the proposed stormwater facilities are installed and maintained for plants. Do I have a motion on this resolution, Mr. Khan?
I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
Okay, I move for adoption by Mr. Khan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Yeah, with second by Mr. McPartlin, and we'll have some discussion. Um, and before, before we review, Mr. Khan, I did have the one comment earlier when I was confused on all these resolutions on, on the drawings. Uh, Mr. Herbis submitted on behalf of Ms. King, it was option two, and in the resolution, we basically say, um, you know, the drawing date, the drawing date is correct, but it doesn't reference the option two. So I'm assuming there's a drawing out there that also has option one on it with the same date. So I just wanted to add option two to the resolution, and that would be in the first whereas only. Uh, I, I think it's the only location that that would have to go. Um, if that's okay with everybody. And the other comment I had was on condition one A or A, one A. Um, I read it under A, it says, handicap parking space and incorporate any additional drainage. The resolution states and, the typo says and versus any, so I just wanted to make that minor change also while we're cleaning things up. Alright.
I, I, I agree with those changes with Chairman Walsh, especially the, the option two.
Okay, so I'll move that we modify the resolution for those two changes, and Mr. Khan, will you second that for me?
I do, I will second that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Khan. Alright, so we have an amended resolution, but we're not done here unless anybody else has any other concerns that we may have missed. Any other concerns or questions? Well, let's, let's vote on the, the resolution, the modifications, if, if there's no other. All those in favor, modify any resolution, so adding the option two for drawing in a minor typo change under change and to any, signify by saying aye if you agree with those changes.
Aye.
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 Okay, is anybody opposed at all? Okay, hearing none opposed, we have an amended resolution. Any other discussion?
So, um, Kevin, I know we're voting on the drawing that's before us and it has the conditions, and I think that's appropriate to do because we got a lot of last-minute drawings. But I just wanted to show the board quickly and I will forward it to them later, like Frank did, submit a new plan with the reduced driveway, like we'll continue to work with him on it. But if you just wanted.
But Laura, that, that is, that new plan is covered by one of our conditions.
Yeah, it is, as long as, it looks like we're going down the right path, um, which it looks like it to me. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but this is really the, the changes that we were talking about in our resolution. So he's making the driveway smaller and he's adding the landscaping here. So just so you guys know, like, he's already gone, started to go down the path of this resolution and it looks pretty good to me.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make that clear, right, that although we're, we're voting on the drawing attached to the resolution that we just discussed, we previously discussed, this new drawing from Frank is, is on the path of fulfilling resolution number?
One?
One.
Yeah.
Resolution one, especially one A.
Yep, condition one B, yep.
That's good.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that out, like I said, I was a latecomer, it's moving in the right direction, so I don't have a problem with it. And, and, you know, uh, obviously, the, uh, any, any decisions that are made, anything that's filed will be modified to be correct with the correct drawing. Any other concerns with that at all? Any other comments on the project at all, from the applicant or from the board members? Uh, just like I say, I think it's, I think it's gonna be good, it makes this building more conforming, right? So, um, I think we've been sensitive to the neighbors over there, so I, I think it's gonna work out okay for Ms. King and it potentially could set a precedent over there for possibly changing some of these other buildings and hopefully doing it in the correct way that minimizes any impact on the residential neighbors across the street. You have anything else, Mr. Khan?
Nothing else. Thank you, Mr. Henry.
Okay, and Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. O'Flamie?
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin?
Aye.
Mr. Darpino?
Aye.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye. Alright, it's unanimous and the resolution is passed, uh, thank you, Ms. King, and good luck with your venture over there. Ms. King was online, I'm not sure she's still there or not. I don't see her. Yep, she's still there, she's on, not on mute, okay? Anything else on this?
Nah, I think we're okay.
Okay, we're all set, alright, we'll move on, thank you, everybody. So next up is resolution 2020-17, a resolution to grant sketch plan approval and to make a recommendation to the town board on a special use permit for an average density development proposed for a major subdivision application at 2538 River Road, and that's Kelso Farm. Uh, now, we did get an updated resolution, um, late in the day here, and basically, the only thing, and I'm just gonna pull it up personally here, uh, the only thing to change was a revision, or the, again, the making sure the drawing was correct. Um, we, we noted that the, there was a discrepancy in, discrepancy in the drawing and the dates. Um, it, it comments from the town were on June 8th, 20, but the revision date of the drawing is June 3rd, 2020. So it's possible that it just be a typo and they meant to put June 8th, 2020, but that's the resolution that we have in the packet. Um, and so basically, Laura modified the resolution under the further resolved, and I believe, um, under one of, uh, further resolved, and one of the, and first further, first whereas and the first further resolved, just to make sure all those dates were included, so there's no discrepancy on what, what map we're referencing. So basically, we just added some more information to make sure we got the correct map that's attached. Um, we could follow up with the applicant later on if it was a typo to change it, the, uh, the June 8th, if that's what was meant versus the June 3, 3 that was shown on the drawing. Um, and that was the only change of the resolution that was posted on the website, everything else is, uh, as posted. Okay, so with that said, uh, let me just again, go through the, um, the resolution briefly. And what this resolution says is that, um, this planning board and zoning commission hereby recommends that the town board grant a special use permit for an average density development at 2538 River Road, subject to preliminary and final subdivision approval for the reasons in the attached planning board report to the town board, made apart herof and incorporated fully by reference herein with the following conditions. One, the average density development shall occur with a connection built between Windsor Road and River Road as supported by the town code and comprehensive plan, but with an emergency-only gate installed until such time as traffic mitigation can occur on the Windsor Drive corridor to mitigate any additional traffic impacts of, of the connection to the neighborhood. Two, the open space shall be dedicated to the town and Ms. King with a deed restriction that it shall remain forever wild. And three, the realignment of the crosswalk on River Road shall be completed during initial phases of construction. Okay, do I have a motion on the resolution?
I move for adoption, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, the resolution is moved by Mr. McPartlin for adoption, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It's seconded by Mr. Dr. Pino, thank you. Alright, as far as, again, we have the, a resolution was slightly modified to include this thing, so we don't need amendment on that. Um, but let's have some discussion and see if there are any other changes to it. So I'll open the, the floor up to the board.
Uh, first off, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for a, a very minor modification to the resolution on page two of the resolution, first whereas, line three, just inserting the word on after the word mitigated before Windsor Drive.
Okay, first whereas on page two?
Yes.
Okay, on Windsor Drive, got it, okay. Alright. And is there, I know the, I guess I, you know, if you want to talk about it, the one, the one, I won't say concern, but we have, you know, the map that's attached to this resolution shows the, a break in the road, it doesn't show the road being connected. Um, and I, you know, we weren't able to, I don't know if we've asked or whether, I think the applicant was aware that we wanted to see, you know, blacktop completed, um, all the way, and that's not what's shown. We want to make it clear to the town board that along with the emergency access gate is that the pavement connects and that the pavement is installed by the developer at the developer's expense, not the town's expense. So, um, do we need to add a condition to make that clear?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I believe we have to add that condition so that the town board understands that the intent is to have the road connected at River.
Okay. So, you know, I've got some kind of words here, words for that, um, the bottom line is, I don't know, Laura, if you have suggestions or Alexis, but basically.
You can see, you could say the average density development shall occur with a fully paved connection between Windsor Drive and River Road instead of connection built. You want to just flip it out to fully paved connection between Windsor Road and River Road?
Yeah, and maybe we could just add with the barrier in place, I mean, even though with its state's barrier.
I know, that's what's still there, so it would read the average density development shall occur with a fully paved connect, connection between Windsor Drive and River Road as supported by the town code and comprehensive plan, but with an emergency-only gate installed until such time as traffic mitigation can occur on Windsor Drive to mitigate any additional traffic impacts.
And again, the, the purpose there was that the, the drawing that we have, the latest revision, it's where we, we like to be, we like to, you know, see the pavement connect, and I want to make sure there's no confusion when it goes forward to the town board of what our intention was there. Um, did I capture that okay, Mr. Dr. Pino, or any other board members? I think it's Laura, does everybody understand that, that additional condition that we want to add? I'm not aware of any others, so let me start by saying, do I have a motion to modify the resolution? To, to add the on Windsor Drive and the first whereas, as mentioned by Mr. McPartlin, and then add condition four, that was just summarized by Laura Robinson regarding, uh, making it clear that the road would be paved all the way to River Road. Do I have a second on that? Alright, Fred may ask, do I have a motion for those amendments?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, moved by Mr. Dr. Pino, do I have a second? Okay, I'll second it, okay? So it's a move by Mr. Dr. Pino and seconded by Chairman Walsh, and we can open it back up for discussion again. Uh, you know, the thing about paving it is that, you know, there's gonna be a barrier in place, but by paving it, A, it's the applicant's expense, you know, uh, and B, it does, you know, if there's, you know, if there is an emergency, maybe you have a broken pavement with a crusher run or whatever there, it's just better to have the pavement. The town highway department does have to maintain emergency access points, so it's gonna be a lot easier for them to maintain and, and plow a paved area, so just thinking of them also. I think it'll look better, um, also, but there will be an emergency barrier in place, um, just that the road will be completed at the applicant's expense. Any other questions, comments, concerns from the board members?
Now, Mr. Chairman, this, this is Mo Oster, I just want to say, I mean, I know, I, I still have my concerns overall about the additional traffic, even though it's obviously much less than what there is before, but I do think we had a very, you know, painstaking discussion to build some consensus at the last meeting, and I think from that, I think what we've done, I think we did build a fairly good compromise, um, and also reflecting the fact that I think was a very good idea, you know, the, the, the crash gate on River Road, because if it was the other way theoretically, then that would also potentially create a lot of cut-through traffic through like Riverdale and Briar, so. I think that was, it was actually good to have it where, you know, where, where, where it is, because it also prevents additional, it prevents additional cut-through traffic, um, um, going on. So I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make that point, because like I said, I think I, I still have some concerns about where this could go in the future, but I do think there was a significant attempt based upon a lot of different perspectives on building some consensus.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Oster.
I guess Laura, just to say, um, you know, if, if the town board were to approve our recommendation, I just want to verify, the decision to remove that gate in the future is a town board decision, then, right?
Yeah. Um, it would typically be because at that point, the planning board has improved it, you know, with those conditions, and then typically, when there's modifications to the road, it's a town board action. Potentially, if you guys wanted it to be a planning board action, you could ask that it be a planning board action and that the town board defer it to you, but typically, that would be a town board action.
Yeah, but we would, I mean, even in that case, would we still be looking at whatever the new drawings and plan would be with the activity? Yeah, but we would, I mean, even in that case, would we still be looking at whatever the new drawings and plan would be with the activation of the road? Or, no, we wouldn't be involved, though?
Well. It's, you know. We have compared it before to Lori Drive, but it's a little bit different in some ways, um, from Lori Drive, but, I mean, theoretically, at least, the way that I'm imagining it, is that you guys would. You know, review the subdivision with the full road in place and the barrier there. And, um, I mean, essentially, you would review the subdivision. And get everything in place that you could possibly get in place without the barrier being, you know, so that it would be. At some point, okay to remove the barriers, you guys would do the maximum that you absolutely could with the powers that you have to get the subdivision ready for the barrier to be removed. And then the rest of the corridor, which we've heard of the pre-existing concerns, and that's something that we don't wanna kind of continue to, continue to aggravate, right? So we can do everything within our power, within what we have to review. Um, so that when the town board is able to address any of the pre-existing problems that we're trying not to aggravate. Um, then they can say, okay, we have reached a point where we've addressed the corridor to the best of our ability. Um, so the planning board's done its job, the town board's done its job, and then theoretically, the barrier could be lifted if, you know, if it could get to that point.
Okay, so, so the, the key conclusion my question's leading to is. Is there, is there a possibility or an option or a way in which, whenever that decision were ever to be made? That it would trigger another traffic study?
Um, I mean, you could certainly put that condition in there. Um, it's kind of uncharted territory, and if that's something that's very important to you guys. Um, you could put that in your recommendation, or, you know, during preliminary subdivision review, um, and final subdivision, you could put a condition that the traffic barrier wouldn't be lifted until. You know, further traffic studies, head evaluation, act something. You can, you yourselves, I think, could probably put a subdivision condition on there requiring a traffic study.
You mean now, at this moment?
I mean, you could, you could do it both places, I mean, a lot of times, if we feel very strongly about something, we put it in both places, so you make it a condition of the special use permit, and you make it part of the approval for the subdivision. Um, if you, you know, I mean, you guys actually have pretty extensive subdivision powers, um, you certainly could just make that a condition of subdivision approval as well.
Before, before we go on any further, I, I know we had a motion this second, I can't recall, to be honest with you, whether or not, uh, we moved the amendment. So I'd just like to say all those in favor of the, the two amendments, so the, uh, typo correction and the fourth condition, please signify by saying aye, make sure we got the record straight. So signify by saying aye, aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing that opposed, again, I just, I couldn't remember whether we did, I want to make sure we had a correct, uh, resolution. Okay?
I don't think we did.
So one thing, you know. Go ahead, Mr. Khan.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, you go ahead.
Yeah, I can say, you know, to what Laura was saying there, you know, we had this tra- traffic study, which was different, uh, and it was, um, first time our experiencing with it. Um, who knows what the future holds, especially, you know, coming out of the coronavirus, um, episode here. Um, you know, it seems like things are gonna change also, and that could have a positive impact on, you know, the traffic in the neighborhood. And, uh, the desire for people not to take that route, so, you know, so, um, I think that, you know, the work that was done. Um, by the applicant and their engineers, and by our town-designated engineer, it's conservatives, my view, and I, I think we're gonna, you know, be okay. Um, if the town board, you know, again, and this is only a recommendation to town board at this time, not only, it gets very important recommendation to town board this time. But the town board, you know, is gonna have, um, hear from the public and already get back to us, um, on a direction. The town board could have conditions that we need to follow, uh, and, and as they have in the past for any special use permits, and, and of course, we'll take those into consideration during the, as we continue on in this process. We still have work to do in front of us, uh, this is the point where we take a break and turn it over to the town board, and listen to what they have to say. Now, if the town, you know, again, the, the purpose of the gate is not impact Windsor Drive, I know that there, everybody's concerned, and rightfully so. Especially with approximately 950 cars, if we get the 90% diversion rate, and we recognize that, and we've said that. Right? So with that said, you know, the, the barrier, it won't happen, the only additional traffic's gonna have a result, as a result of this recommendation. Is the approximately 20 cars AM and PM from the new residences of the Kelch Farm community will be the only additional traffic. Uh, yes, there'll be pavement there, yes, there'll be a, an, an emergency access gate, um, town board, you know, and, and I, I'm sure they'll do the right thing. Uh, if it comes to a point where that looks like it's, uh, uh, either budgetary, or, uh, we get a grant or something. Uh, we could, you know, do the study, and hopefully, and I would expect that the Windsor community would be involved. At that point in time over here, here's the things we're thinking about to do traffic calming, you know, whether it be, uh, uh, you know, islands, or, you know, there's talk of boulevards, I'm not saying any of those are the way to go. But that's, you know, it may, we may have to hire or bring in a consultant to, to, um, give us some, um, thoughts on how to do all that, to give the town board thoughts on how to do all that. Along with that, there may have to be another, um, traffic study to get some, uh, real data based on the conditions of, uh, at that point in time, whenever that is, two, three, four years from now, couple of years from now, whatever it may be. And then based on all that, and input from the Windsor Drive, and the, and the residents, not just the Windsor Drive, but in that whole community. Uh, the town board may decide that, hey, we can mitigate, and we can get to a point where we can open that, that gate. And if they open the gate, and, and it doesn't behave as expected, the planning board, I'm not saying we're washing our hands of it, but the town board also have the authority to close that gate, you know, town board's gonna be in control here, and I think the people know that. And should understand that, we're making a recommendation, we've, we've heard positive recommendations from the complete streets and from the conservation advisory council. Uh, you know, we're concerned about the increase in traffic, we all stated that, but we, I think, you know, for us, this is a compromise, I know it's not a compromise for the Windsor Drive folks. But, um, I think, um, I think with some more work, uh, we can get there, and I think it moves the comp plan along, but it doesn't actually implement what's in the comp plan at this point in time.
Right, and tha- thank you, Chairman Walsh, for that summary, right, and I think, I think that actually. The, look, the, the reasoning path that, I'll at least speak to myself that I'm on here, right, is, the hard piece of data from the traffic study. Has caused us to make the recommendation to put in the barrier, I think River Road is a wiser choice, so that, that's fine. So I think we're all, um, all good with that, the question is, in my mind. Should we begin to recommend to the town board that whatever future date consideration comes in for the opening of that gate, of that barrier? That a new traffic study should be, that's, it's, and, and do we put that in as a condition now? Do we put that in as a condition was back to us for subdivision approval? You know, that's, that's, I just wanna put that out in front of.
Yeah, that's, that's, no, thank you, Mr. Khan, I understand. And in fact, uh, if we don't, if we don't do anything with it, the town board might come back with us and say, hey, we're, you know, we're gonna, we could approve the plan, but when we, you know, in the future, there will be a traffic study done. To, um, to, uh, validate that any mitigation strategies that are put in place actually work.
Right.
So, we, you know, uh, I'll leave it to the project leads, Mr. McPartlin and, and Mr. Drapino, if they feel that, uh, we wanna add a condition now. It's saying that upon, uh, you know, execution, upon mitigation and opening of the, uh, emergency gate, that another traffic study be performed to validate. Um, that would be at the town's expense, not at the applicant's expense at that point in time, of course, the applicant would, you know, be done. Um, and we all understand that. You know, it's always the right thing to do, but, you know, what does that entail? Does that just entail, you know, for the town to put out, you know, traffic counters? On the street to get speed and, and traffic counts, or, you know, or does it involve a, you know, an expensive, um, traffic study utilizing actual in, in GPS data, I don't know what that, you know, what that means, I guess is my only concern.
Yeah, but I, I mean, we don't, I don't think we need to specify, if we were to propose this now. Recommendation now as one of our, as one of our, uh, conditions in the recommendation, I, I don't think we need to specify the type of stuff, right?
Uh, and I'm, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just being there for the board, for the regular, for the other board members to just think about that. Traffic has been the critical, most hardest piece of data that we've got. And if there's a future action that may come about. That removes that barrier, it just makes a lot of sense to me that we'd wanna let the town board know. That from an engineering perspective, we'd recommend, engineering and planning perspective, we'd recommend that the traffic study be done. Again.
I'm with you, Mr. Khan, I mean, it's validation, right? Anything they do, it validates, uh, what, you know, what reality is. Mr. McPartlin, Mr. Drapino, you have?
I think Kevin Jengis is actually talking about a traffic study before opening the gate, aren't you, Jengis? Or am I misunderstanding?
Yeah, the one that, when, when a discussion comes up for the opening of the gate, that it would require a traffic study.
Yeah.
See, I, I didn't, I didn't interpret it that way, I'm sorry, Mr. Khan. The reason I didn't interpret it that way, I think you'd wanna get, without the gate open, you're not gonna still get real data. Um, you, you, you know, you've got the traffic study we did now.
So maybe specific, I meant, before, right now, we're making a recommendation, there's a gate and the gate's closed. And the, the, the concept I'm talking about is also making a recommendation that, that prior to that gate being opened, that another traffic study gets triggered.
Yeah. I, I, I just, I just don't know what that would buy you, I mean, I would, I would prefer to see it after the gate was opened to validate any mitigation that occurred, uh, worked, you know? Um, uh, but I'm gonna leave it to the board for discussion, Mr. Drapino, Mr. McPartlin, any thoughts on, uh, Mr. Khan's proposal?
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to jump here, jump in here, so. I think that going with another traffic study before opening the gate, you're gonna be regurgitating a lot of information that you already currently have. With, um, the information that Creighton Manning's already provided. I would think that the next time a traffic study would be done, would be. A similar, a similar study that Creighton Manning has done. In addition to a larger broad brush look at Windsor Drive and connectivity with traffic calming. Street trees, paving, whatever it may be, that would be one component of a larger engineering evaluation. I think right now, you've got, you've got, you've got an independent engineer and a town-designated engineer that both. Pretty much substantiated, they think the traffic counts are gonna, gonna go up.
Yeah, I, I agree with David. Anybody else?
So I, I have a question, um, although it's somewhat hypothetical, what could we foresee? The action which would, uh, the town board would take up the removal of the gate? What, what, what would drive that decision to come before the town board?
Yeah, so this is kind of what we're talking about, and maybe this is some of the frustration that the residents were speaking about, is the steps, right? Like, traffic coming made versus potentially implemented, those kind of things. And maybe we could be clearer on our language, but my understanding of what the board has talked about is. Um, you know, the road would be built and the barrier would be put in place, and, like, the steps would be, you know, and. Is it, I mean, in the world that we're living in right now, I don't think that this is reasonable to consider to happen very quickly, but. You would need a study, an engineering study of the entirety of Windsor Drive, looking at what can be done for traffic. And collecting public input on what those treatments would be, and then figure out what the cost of implementation is, and then implement. And then evaluate, you know, all of that impl- implementation, and then you would have a vote to remove the barrier, would be.
Right.
My vision of what we're asking, but maybe we could be clearer, and maybe my vision isn't the same as what you guys are saying.
But, but I guess, to some extent, Michael, it, it would have to be, there would have to be an initiative to do it, agreed. And, and I don't think any of us can say here today where that initiative begins, correct?
Ri- ri- right, but, but just, just as practicality. Just as a forecast, who, was, who's likely to, to initiate that initiative, so to speak, right? Where would that occur? I know, we don't know, but I'd just like to discuss it.
Well, a couple of places, one would be by residents, right? Uh, it may not necessarily be Windsor Drive, you know, people saying, hey, you know, why isn't that open, and they would, you know, challenge the town board or ask the town board to evaluate it. Another place that those discussions could occur would be the economic development, historic preservation, and environmental conservation, which is basically the planning committee of the town, which is made up by. Uh, you know, members of the conservation advisory ca- committee, town board members, and others, and that could be in, in Laura Robertson, of course, it's on that committee, so that could be an ongoing discussion, hey? You, you have money in the budget to start looking at, you know, mitigation, uh, next year, can we hire a consultant? Do we have a summer intern to work, I know, things along those lines, um, uh, you know, and ju- just start the process, you know? Now, again, as Laura stated, it could, it could take many years, and, you know, especially with the budget restraints that are, are being forecasted. Um, but, you know, but again, it's a, it's a move. To implementing a comprehensive plan, but without taking the leap, you know?
Right.
But there, that, that would be a couple of places that would be discussed, that, that, you know, planning committee, residents, and the town board themselves, and planning department, you know?
Right, a- and I guess firstly, was the comments Laura was making, Michael, that, um. I mean, remember, you know, and I, and I'm a strong believer in this, just based on the data. Right? Traffic on Windsor increases regardless of whether there's a cut-through or not. Usage increases regardless of whether there's a cut-through or not, and so, I would hope that an assessment of all of the measures we've talked about relative to Windsor. You know, happens sometime in the future. So that becomes another, you know, and that would be hopefully a traffic calming measure, a traffic calming assessment. And, and that becomes then also another trigger point for bringing the opening of the gate into discussion. I think that's the, that's the kind of main tangible one, right, that we've actually, as the, as the condition.
I, I look at the, you know, additional traffic study as, as a validation, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I.
Any mitigation worked, you know, not, not just, as David said, you know, redo what we have. Uh, let's make sure, you know, that whatever pe- measures are put in place actually accomplish, uh, the intention. Um, you know, remember too, uh, that one of the, one of the, um, so, potential scenarios for this, uh, resolution was to, um, was to have the road go through. And do an actual traffic count, and if the traffic count, well, came to fruition, that the 90% diversion rate was correct. And there wasn't additional 950 cars, and there were concerns, safety concerns, to put the gate back up, and we chose not to go that route, we decided to put the gate up first. And, uh, recognizing that there is an impact on the community there, and, um, and then, and follow-up action would be required, as, as recommended by, you know, complete streets and conservation advisory council. So, you know, so I, again, I think we're okay, I, I don't think we need to add a traffic study at this time, I think that would be part of the work in progress in the future. When mitigation, uh, strategies are developed, is my view. But I'm open. Any other thoughts from the board, and comments you'd like to make, or you can make a comment when we vote, either way? All right, all right, so we have an amended resolution, we added condition four, as previously stated, we did a minor typo, uh, added the words "on Windsor Drive." Um, if there's no further discussion, board members, um, let's, let's take a vote, Mr. Henry.
Mr. Phil Flynn.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin.
Aye.
Mr. Drapino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. Okay, the amended, uh, modified, uh, resolution is approved, and, um, Laura put the packet up, sent it up to the town board, I believe the town board will be calling for a public hearing at their next, uh, regular, regular meeting. And that public hearing should be held probably sometime either late, assume late July, at the earliest.
Yeah, July 28th.
Uh, maybe we'll be back to having, uh, public meetings, I'm not sure how that, uh, schedule's flowing, but nonetheless, the, uh, the residents and anybody that has any concerns will again have another opportunity to be heard. In front of the town board, and then the town board will make a decision and let us, uh, give us some direction or, um, agreement, whatever, whatever it may be, or conditions that they may have, when they send it back to us, and. We'll take, uh, what they, you know, where that winds up, and we'll do the best we can, as always. So, again, I know there's concerns, uh, from the residents, but like I said, with a gate in place, things aren't gonna change, it's not gonna change overnight. And, um, actually, it will be taken before any changes do occur, and I really believe that. All right? And, uh, I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Drapino, Mr. McPartlin, and, uh, the other board members, and especially those two for their hard work. Um, this is very complex, and it's not easy, and I do appreciate all the input from all of the neighbors, uh, we do take the input seriously. I know you may feel that we've ignored it, um, uh, the, um, hike, bike path was always a given, you know, it was whether or not it was connected or not, and I, to us, this is a compromise, I know it's not for you, so I know it's. It's not that rewarding, but, um, there will be a barricade in place, and traffic will not go up until something hap- something occurs and mitigated. Any other comments from the board? Okay, all right, thank you, everyone. All right, so we're all done with new business, and we're gonna move on to discussion items, we have a few for tonight. Uh, we, we, uh, the plan is not to talk about Vincenzo or, um, uh, Kelch, uh, tonight, we're all set with those, so the discussion items are from some new projects. First being 3410 State Street Site Plan Review Application for a Portable Storage Unit, uh, by Seraphini's, uh, Seraphini Properties LLC. Um, and this is, um, it's the, uh, the Crown Automotive and Upstate Gun and Ammo, I believe, and I know that we have the applicant online for this discussion. And I will mention, I did take a look at the information in the packet along with, along with everybody else. And, um, and, uh, just to summarize before we talk to the applicant. So there is a, basically a, uh, a container, storage container, uh, ISL, there's different names from cargo container, whatever you wanna call it. It's been placed on the property and so it's already existing there. Um, and if that's to stay, uh, needs approval, uh, site plan modification from this town board or from this board, excuse me, planning board. And it would also possibly need an area variance. So this is the first time on the agenda, we're basically just gonna discuss that tonight. And we're gonna hear from the applicant about the, the whys and what, what kind of plans they have. And then we'll have some open discussion. Um, and, um, so with that said, Laura, we have Mr. Seraphini right online, is that correct?
I'm here.
Hi, Mr. Seraphini, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. So do you wanna, you wanna stick it off by briefing us and tell us what's going on and?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, essentially what I did is, uh, I chose to replace a couple of, uh, vehicles that I had that didn't look too great that I was using as, uh, storage. Um, and took those out, cleaned up the area, dropped in the, uh, the storage container, uh, because it was just a lot better choice and I felt it improved the, uh, the aesthetics there, um, while accomplishing what I needed in regards to storage. Uh, I think you're probably familiar with the property. I know a lot of the board members have been there, you know, over the years. And, uh, kind of a challenging property, you know, sandwiched between Albany Street and, uh, State Street. There's not a lot of usable space for us, not a lot of space for expansion. But, you know, considering, you know, winter, things like that, we've got a lot of storage requirements that can't be met with the way the building is. So, you know, trying to find a solution, this was what I came up with.
So, so I'm actually, e- exactly where is the storage facility right now? Where's the storage pod right now?
Storage container is inside the fenced-in area.
Okay, so the area highlighted is yellow and drawing.
I, I'm sorry, if you could repeat that.
The area highlighted is yellow and drawing.
Correct.
So it's the Albany Street side?
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct. And, um, you know, and I, I'd have to pull up the, uh, information, but I believe it's a, what, a 60-foot container? It's probably what, 12 or?
Um.
It's probably the largest container you can put on the back of a truck and legally get it down the road, it looks like to me.
Yeah, I'll be honest with you, I have to look up there, the numbers, um. Based on the size of the building, I wanna say it's actually a 40, but I, please don't quote me on that.
Yeah, but it's, it's a, it's a good sized container, though. You'd agree with that, Mr. Seraphini, it's a pretty good size. Um, can you tell us, um, which business it supports? The automotive or the gun and ammo or is that, you know, strictly private? Is it something you can share with us about the use?
It supports all of my business endeavors. And, uh, you know, obviously I can't elaborate on that, but it supports all of the business endeavors.
Yeah, um, and, um, you know, obviously it was, you know, and then I, just being straightforward here with you, it was put in place without, you know, coming in and getting pre-approval for modification of the site plan. You know that we've, uh, worked with you in the past, um, be able to have a dual business there, automotive slash, you know, the gun ammo business. And it was concerns about, you know, the size of the property and, uh, uh, keeping the businesses separate. And, um, so, you know, we've worked with you, you know, pretty, I think the town's done a good job working with you in the past. Um, I did take a look and, you know, that is pretty imposing, that container, I think we could agree with that. It's a good sized container, especially if you live, uh, in one of those residences on Albany Street and you look out your front door, I know that what, what was there wasn't the most beautiful before. Um, uh, but, you know, if you clean that up and then you replace it with this, you know, a large, I think it's kind of like a reddish orange. Rust color.
Yeah, they, they refer to it as anti-fouling paint, it's a reddish tint.
Yeah, so, so I just had a few questions and I, and I think the board would agree. And I mentioned these questions to Laura, she might have talked to you about them. But, um, did, did you, um, you know, is it a permanent installation? You know, what are you looking for, is it temporary storage?
That is, I guess, kind of a, an up in the air, uh, because the definition of permanent can vary. Um, it is a storage that I require for my business at this point in time. Do I wish to keep the container on that property in perpetuity? No, absolutely not. Um, my intent is to either go forward with putting an addition on or finding a different facility where, you know, I can, uh, handle my, uh, my affairs with that.
Okay, so, so Chairman Walsh, can I interject or I could wait until you're done if you had a list you were going through?
No, I'm doing.
Okay, so, so, so Laura, what I wanted to understand, and we probably need to pull these. I know there are a couple of area variances on the property, right? I know there's a use variance.
It's a special use permit, actually, because there are two uses on the property, which is what we looked at. And there are area variances, um.
So, so I think maybe this is a good time to assess whether the square footage is associated with each of the businesses can be made appropriate, Craig, if you actually were to look at this as, you know, thinking about expanding the building, having a consistent structure.
Okay.
And, and I mean, I know obviously that's a lot more, you know, planning and expense that you currently have in front of you. But apart, apart from the, apart from the, which are important, the, the comments that Chairman Walsh made about just the imposing nature of a storage structure under property. It obviously begs temporariness as a, uh, you know, as, as a final conclusion. The other thing I'm significantly concerned about, without getting into any details at all, just in general, from a protection of, uh, property and, um, and your business, is the security associated with the storage facility.
And I think that's definitely, if your concerns are, are there, you and I should have a private discussion on that.
Right, so, but, but the key thing is, is that, you know, I mean, that's, you know, you don't want people, uh, being able to break in there and drive out a car or car parts, right? So the key thing is that, um, what's your, are you, do you think you can seriously look at building and extension of the building, getting, I think it would end up getting square footages for each of the businesses to probably where they need to be, because they probably aren't there right now. Laura, I think you can verify that.
Oh yeah, I'm, I'm actually, you know, in talks with, uh, an engineer who is looking at what we can feasibly do with the property and how to make changes. Obviously, a lot of that is gonna come down to, you know, what Niskuna is willing to work with me on because the property sandwiched between Albany Street and State Street is so distinctively odd that, you know, if we followed conventional setbacks, I'm pretty sure we'd have a five-foot wide building going down the center of the property and that's about it. So, you know, there's, there's gonna be a lot of moving pieces, if you will, but we are looking at the feasibility of that currently.
I agree with Mr. uh, Mr. Khan, you know, I'd rather be in a position to say, hey, you're gonna put an addition on the building and it, uh, may require an area variance, uh, because of the unique location, basically fronting two streets. I'd rather, uh, uh, support an area variance that, uh, has a, uh, uh, a decent looking addition versus a temporary storage container that which could be temporary for many years, um, you know?
And if there was a solid plan, and if there was a solid plan for that, a real plan, we could, we could look at, then obviously the concept of temporary storage until that plan gets executed is something that becomes a little bit more amenable, because one day, because the date for its removal is set to some extent, right?
Yeah.
I'm actually fairly amenable to setting a concrete date in which we've either, you know, submitted for, um, a, a change or, you know, removing the, uh, the storage structure from the property. I, I'm content with that concept so that there is an end date involved. You know, obviously we wanna make it reasonable because based on construction times and meeting times and that, you know, if we set something for even six months down the road, that's not gonna happen. But, um, I do not have an issue with setting a reasonable amount of time where, you know, X date, something has to have been done.
Let me, um, let me ask Laura a question here. Laura, again, I didn't get a chance to, to review everything, but it, can, can somebody apply for a temporary storage container? And whether the associated time limits, limits with that are available now to Mr. Seraphini?
There may be some flexibility with the planning board approvals, but typically, um, they're only allowed to have them on their property for 90 days. Um, and like when, when I, I talked to Craig about this, when we looked at Target, because we essentially said, we, we are always gonna need pods. They're not gonna be the same pods, but we're always gonna need pods. Then we treated those as accessory structures and they are an accessory variance. Um, there may be some flexibility if the planning board is essentially looking at it as a site plan, uh, with, you know, a temporary way of getting to a permanent addition or a removal. I can look into it, um, because obviously if it is temporary and we're working towards something different, it would be nice to just have it stay at a planning board level, um, but I, I have to look into it.
And I guess Laura, I, I think I know the answer is, but let me ask it anyway. So, so Mrs. Seraphini had put this, uh, storage, um, container up and it was in violation of one of the, it was in violation of what? One of the usage agreements he's got or an area agreement that he has?
Um, well, just typically, um, typically when you do something large that's going to last for a little while, it would need some kind of approval by the planning board, so.
Okay, and so that's why it became a planning board issue because of?
Yeah, but I mean, and trying to get it talked about this, it may also be a building permit if, if it's permanent. Like you, you would have to check and make sure that it was, you know, that if you're making it a permanent structure and it has power and it has water, I don't think it has water, but any, you know, plumbing, whatever, all goes in. Could potentially be a building permit, but we didn't get to the building permit process because the first step is really the planning board site plan approval.
Right, Mr. Khan's, uh, line of thought there, if, um, you know, if, if, if it came in for a building permit and it, and we're at the placement and because of the two front yards, it's complex, that would require, uh, the area variance, that would require the planning board to make a recommendation on the area variance. And Mr. Seraphini, no matter what we say, you know, if we say, okay, yeah, it looks good, you're gonna, you know, clean it up a little bit, maybe put some, uh, shrubbery in front or, you know, dress it up a bit. There's only Board of Appeals could say, no, that's, you know, that's over the top and deny it. And then, you know, basically the structure's gotta go. So we'd be better off to commit to Khan's, uh, train of thought to, uh, to start thinking about a longer range plan and then, you know, uh, supplementing, uh, that plan with the temporary storage to get you to, to the endpoint, you know? Um, and then, you know, and then we could, it'd be easier for us to work with you on that versus, uh, you know, open-ended. Um, you know, Laura will take a look at researching the code and what we've done in the past to see if there's any time limitations, like 90 days or, um, you know, anything that we have to abide by that's in the ordinance. So let's assume there isn't. Now, we still don't want it to, to go on for an extended period of time without either some changes or a plan in place. Now, it's, from what I see, I, I think your business looks like it's pretty successful at that location, seems to be a pretty good location. Um, I mean, I would, you know, I would be, uh, pretty supportive, I'm pretty flexible when it comes to area variances for unique situations. And, uh, I would love to see you come in with, uh, an addition to the back of the building that cleans up that backyard and makes it presentable on Albany Street. So that would be a win for you and a win for the neighborhood and you can have an improved structure over there. And hopefully it's a great location for your business and you stay in Niskuna. Another option would be, you know, obviously to find another location in Niskuna that's more suitable for your, your business. But, um, uh, you gotta remember that you do have a special use permit for two uses. And if you go to another place in Niskuna and possibly some other municipalities, that might trigger if you wanna still keep the dual business, um, business model that you have. You could still end up in a situation where you're gonna need either a special use permit or depending on what municipality you go, uh, uh, some type of variance or, um, in order to do that. So you have a, you have a good approval in place for what you're doing. So I would suggest you hard consider the, uh, the addition.
Oh, I absolutely, and I, to be perfectly honest, I've been very happy with Niskuna. So, um, you know, a- as much as other municipalities are an option, I would like to stay in Niskuna.
Yep, so, so, so Craig, and I mean, and I know, you know, I was a project leader the last time around. I, I think it's time to really consider putting an investment into the property along the lines of what Chairman Walsh identified. I think it'll, it'll be very hard pressed for this board to approve any kind of a quote-unquote long-term storage facility just sitting and standing alone there. And I think there's, you know, apart again from the aesthetics, from the land usage, from everything else, from the, you know, that area, um, usage. I, I think there's a whole bunch of issues that, um, you know, the only function it's providing right now, it's giving you the temporary storage that you need. And I think that you need to actually expand your property. And I'm with Chairman Walsh that, you know, we can be flexible and also in our recommendations to the ZBA if it allows it for area and setback. But if there's gonna be a bigger, nicer, well-constructed building there, secure building, I, I think that's the path we need to be on. I think.
I'm absolutely in concert with you on that.
And it's been successful, agreed?
I, I believe it has.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, um, yeah, I mean, and then that would work for the temporary structure if you had a, an endpoint in mind, like, uh, you know, it's gonna take, uh, you know, a year and a half to, you know, get, uh, the drawings approved, the approvals in place and, you know, variances in place. And, you know, then we can work with you, you know, work with the, maintaining that and do the transition to whatever is new there. A lot easier than, you know, than giving a blanket approval. Uh, you know, I hate to say, okay, you can keep it for one year. Uh, then, you know, you know how fast a year goes by, right? You're gonna be still looking.
Very much so.
Yeah, you're gonna be looking at the same problem, just, uh, just kicking the can down the road, you know? Now, one thing you should consider too, and you know, and I'm not the architect, that's Mr. Diarpino here, but, uh, you know, if, uh, if it's tough to put addition on the building, you'd offer have a, um, a standalone structure with maybe a hallway to connect it to the building, maybe like a little courtyard type thing. So it might be able to reduce construction costs, something along those lines. But if you did something like that, it would be more like, uh, you know, uh, uh, you know, a nice building so that along Albany Street, you know, it would look, you know, presentable. You could put some shrubberies there and it would give you the space. It could even be the same size as a storage container potentially. Um, uh, and it wouldn't have to be, um, uh, the whole building wouldn't have to be, uh, connected to the, uh, to the existing structure. Maybe it's just a hallway to get you there, you know, or it's a separate building. So you got, you know, some options that you can evaluate, you know, uh, to reduce costs, in other words, you know?
Oh, absolutely, um, you know, I'm more than amenable to any input. And like I said, I actually have an engineer who's working on my situation as it is. So, um, you know, I can bring those ideas into it to try and see what is, again, financially feasible, but also, you know, what's gonna look well, uh, well-placed to that area. And, um, you know, knowing that the board would support some area variances, things like that does give a little bit more confidence towards the path that we've been going.
Yeah, yeah, again, I, I always speak for myself and it would be a board decision on support. And I think the support would be based on the aesthetics of the submittal and the magnitude of the submittal, right? So if you keep those things in mind, I think you could, you could get, you could get there. Um, because again, we'd like to, to see you be successful in the location that you're at. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna open it up to the rest of the board, if anybody else besides Mr. Khan and myself have any comments on this or anything, uh, or any questions for the applicant.
Yeah, I just have, uh, one question for Mr. Seraphini. So whatever the materials are that's stored in there, these Conexes have quite a ebb and flow of temperature range in them. They can get extremely hot, hot in the summer, very cold in the winter. Um, I'm, I guess we're just kinda collectively concerned, whatever's being stored in there, what could be long-term, what you have in there is not susceptible to cold or high temperatures.
No, I, I can tell you that anything that goes in there is going to be safe in there. Um, obviously, anything that I own, I'm gonna be protective of, uh, for the simple fact that I'm financially invested in it, if nothing else. So I can assure the board that they don't have any concerns there.
Okay, um, so I guess my thought is, and I'll let Laura tell me if I'm wrong. Laura, you know, this is for discussion tonight, it's the first time the board has seen it. And of course, I always, as always, um, suggest that all the board members take a ride over there, go down Albany Street and take a look at all angles over there, all right? Laura, research, uh, what the ordinances say as far as temporary structures. Um, and I think, Mr. Seraphini, you should talk to your engineer and think about, uh, a plan for, um, long-range plan. Um, and then we'll have a follow-on discussion. Because I, I think that's all we can do right now. Um, but I think you, you at least heard from a couple of us that were concerned with the aesthetics, uh, the magnitude of the cargo container basically sitting along Albany Street, you know, and how that looks for the neighbors. So if we could, if you could think about that and then, uh, you know, come back with some hard proposals for us and then we could, uh, you know, help those along, I think that'd be the right way to go.
Absolutely, and, uh, just so that you know, in the short term, I had spoken to Laura the other day and, uh, we discussed, you know, putting some sort of arbor byde or something, you know, on the outside of the fence line to, you know, kind of block the view a little bit. And the biggest issue that we face with that is as the plows come by, they're gonna wipe everything out. So, you know, we're definitely open to different options, um, and import is always gonna help us. So if anybody has any thoughts, you know, we'll, we'll take that, you know, back and do what we can with it. Cause our, our goal is not to be a difficult neighbor, it's to be a good neighbor. Because our, our goal is not to be a difficult neighbor, it's to be a good neighbor.
And, uh, we'll get a project, we'll get a talk to you and try to help things along also, uh, from one of the members from the planning board, like we have done in the past.
Okay.
All right, and, uh, so whoever would like to participate, you don't need to answer now, you can just email Laura and we can get you down and you can get the discussions going, okay? But, um, is there anything else for tonight, Mr. Seraphini? I know I just wanted to get some preliminary thoughts from the board.
Um, as far as my end, I, I think you guys know, you know, where I'm at and what I'm looking for. Um, you know, I've got some information that I think I can take back to my engineer and work with him. Um, you know, from there, I, I think, you know, any of the board members that wanna stop by, if they wanna, you know, talk to me individually or whatnot, you know, so we can kinda, you know, just throw ideas back and forth and, you know, discuss things that may be aren't for an open forum, that would be great.
Yep, I'll take you, I'll take you up on that, uh, that offer and we'll stop and see.
To clarify, the only reason they're not for open forum is because of the nature of the business, not because there's anything that, you know? Yeah.
Yeah, the nature of the business, uh, you know, security, you know, obviously we don't wanna advertise anything inappropriate.
Absolutely.
You know, but, um, you know, I, I think you know the position, we're concerned with the magnitude and the, and the aesthetics of the container for the long term. We would love to see you, uh, do something to be a good neighbor and to stick around and to make your business more suitable. Whether it be on the side, backyard, or out the back, on the Albany Street side, you know, consider both sides, you know, for any additions.
Absolutely.
All right, and, uh, we'll, we'll get back to you, project lead, somebody will stop by or, you know, I'll stop by and take a look and then we'll, uh, we'll, uh, you know, keep the discussion going, probably put you down, potentially on the July thirteenth meeting for a follow-up to see where we stand, okay?
Okay, sounds great.
All right, does that sound good, Laura?
Yep, that sounds good.
All right.
And Laura, I think if you, if you could at least get us a documentation of what the appropriate square footages are and also the length of time on a temporary.
Yeah, and I think, and I think the other thing we gotta do is we gotta do, uh, we should look at the denial too, Laura. So assuming that it's in the position that it's in, if, if, uh, if we do need to make a recommendation on the ZBA on the container, because that's the path Mr. Seraphini wants to take, I'll need that denial letter, uh, so we understand. Because it would probably be similar for any structure that would be there, similar denial.
Yeah, that's essentially what we treat it like, as accessory structure with the setbacks that would be required there.
Uh, that would help, uh, help, uh, the applicant and us along.
Okay.
Know how bad things are, how much we're, how much you'd have to request for an area variance.
Yeah, that makes sense, I'll get all those numbers, Clark and I can work on them.
All right, give you some, give you something else to do. Hey, Mr. Seraphini, you have anything else for tonight?
That's it.
All right, all right, thanks for your time and we'll, we'll be having some follow-on discussion.
Thank you, everybody, have a good evening.
All right, you too. All right, uh, up next is forty seventeen State Street Site Plan Review Application for Tenant Change to Professional Building. And I see Mr. Fusco is on the line, good evening, sir. Yeah, you see how to get your mute off so we can hear you, sir. How'd you make out there? If you slide your mouse down the bottom of the screen, you'll see a bar pop up and you can see the little microphone if you click on the microphone.
How's that?
There you go.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought Laura was muting me. Well, good evening, everyone.
Well, good evening. You wanna, um, you know, we're down for discussion, I did take a look at, uh, the information that the planning department put out, so. But you can just, uh, tell us what's going on since we got you.
Well, I don't really know what's going on because this is kinda new to me. Um, a few years back, I thought we were all set with this building because we actually have a special use permit that allowed mixed use on this building. So I thought any tenant that was allowed in that zoning, uh, would be allowable with a building permit application. So I don't really know what's going on here, but if you wanted me to talk about the tenants that we just put in here, that's fine.
Okay, well, let me, let me take, tell you my view of what's going on here, and I think that it's very simple. Uh, anytime we have, uh, an establishment, uh, change a tenant, we do a change of tenant resolution. And, and the reason for that is, uh, the tenant might be, um, uh, uh, I wanna say not inappropriate, but require, uh, a different set of standards on the property such as increased parking or access or special requirements to make sure all those are met. We've, we've caught, uh, changes and the planning board members have had suggestions where, hey, you're trying to put this one tenant next to this other tenant pre-existing and it's gonna be very loud, so you need, you know, consider like soundproofing the wall, things along those lines. So we do a simple resolution that just basically, uh, does a, uh, change a tenant, um, and it shouldn't be cumbersome. Um, especially from what I saw, because I believe it's from State Farm to Allstate, so it's basically the same business, same business model, similar business going in there, so it seems to be pretty straightforward. And I believe the other business was the, um, uh, signage company, right? Uh, basically they're, uh, when they make the, uh, formats or the models or whatever you wanna call it, right, for signage?
Color Pro.
Color Pro, yeah.
Okay, I, I understand that, that's how Laura explained it to me, so, uh, you know, I know now, I did not know before. So I understand, uh, anytime we get a tenant, we have to make an application.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is signage now, I think, uh, I, I don't think Laura had an opportunity. I took a quick look, it looks like the Allstate signs should be conforming, it looks like it was, I think it's twenty square feet, right, Laura? So less than twenty square feet, so I think we're okay there, but for the Color Pro, I think it's an open item just to submit whatever signage, but to make sure it's in conformance, because if it isn't in conformance, you know, we may have to make a recommendation or it's a possibility to provide you a waiver, we'd have that opportunity if we feel it's appropriate. So I think that was an open item, right, Laura, just to basically submit the signs for Color Pro. Um, and, um, and then we'll, we'll do a resolution, assuming that there's nothing special there. Um, it seems like it's a low intensity, both uses, uh, it's consistent with past uses, so I really don't see any issue, Mr. Fusco. We can get through this really quickly and, uh, and just be up to date what's on file with the town.
Okay, I can just go over the basic narrative that I presented, um, to the town. Uh, we'll start with Color Pro, Color Pro is, uh, the graphics arm of Ray Sign, which is over on Colonial Street. I don't know if Colonial Street is Niskuna or Schenectady, but, uh, it's off Albany Street, just beyond the old Drum Sound Building there. So the vicinity of this, uh, vinyl shop is, uh, you know, was strategic to what they do with their large signs. So she really just does, uh, the vinyl layouts, she does, uh, graphic art, she has a vinyl printer and cutter, so she'll make small signs. Um, they do, they do walk-in business, if you'd like a little sign that says happy birthday or, uh, Culver nineteen, you know, they will print a sign up while you wait, but there's no, uh, extensive machinery, there's basically just, uh, a plotter and a, and a cutter. Uh, one-person operation, uh, one girl operates the whole facility, once in a while they have somebody come in from Ray Sign if they need, uh, some help with some larger vinyl. Uh, they have normal hours of operation, uh, nine to five. The Color Pro store is the same footprint of the, uh, what was it, the dentistry? Anarundag Dentistry, I think that was there prior, a thousand square foot. And we usually use a, a rule of thumb, I don't know if that's true in Niskuna, but two hundred fifty square foot to one parking space. So, uh, that gives us four parking spaces and, you know, we allocated, I think, ten spaces to them. Sometimes we'll do some vinyl work in the parking lot, so they ask for a little more room, but basically they take up no parking. In fact, the girl that runs the shop doesn't even own a vehicle. Uh, they have small UPS deliveries, FedEx deliveries. They have one unisex, a handicap restroom that has been there, uh, since the existence of the building. Um, let me see, we installed a new vinyl floor, removed a couple existing walls that were in the dentist's office and a fresh coat of paint. So we didn't really put a lot of money into the space or, or change any of the, the floor plan as far as a- access to the front or back of the building or front or back of the room or to the restroom.
Yeah, seems reasonable. And again, the, and the, uh, Allstate versus the State Farm, pretty much there's an even swap there, right?
Allstate, it's, it's exactly the same, um, they're fourteen hundred square foot. Again, if we use the formula of one parking space or two hundred fifty square foot, that gives us six spaces. We assign them twelve. Um, they have a separate, uh, men's and, uh, ladies' room that are handicapped, the kitchen. It's basically identical, what is identical to the State Farm, uh, use that's been there for years. We didn't do anything except change, uh, the carpet and, uh, the color of the walls, so.
Okay.
Same cubicles, same people, same amount of people.
Again, sounds reasonable, I know that, uh, our code is probably different than the two fifty, it, it depends on the use, but, uh, nonetheless, even if it, it seems like you're, uh, more than enough and there shouldn't be an issue with carpeting or parking, carpeting, parking, getting, getting late. Right, Laura, did you, did you do any of the parking numbers at all?
Yeah, we checked, so, because actually the former site was a dentist. Um, our medical, our professional medical office has a higher parking regulation than lived in the retail store. So there's actually a surplus in parking from the tenant team.
Okay, so it sounds like there shouldn't be any issues then, as long as, as long as the sign is reasonable on Color Pro, we should be able to have a resolution.
Yeah, let me explain the sign, now, I went out and measured the sign today, the, the sign, it's a monument sign and it's, uh, eight point three square foot per side, so we're sixteen and a half square foot total for signage. And State Farm, I have not seen that, I think, uh, I'm sorry, Allstate, they made an application to you, Laura?
Yeah.
I haven't seen that, so I don't know what they're doing with signage, but it's my understanding that they're basically doing a, uh, non-lit sign next to the door that was probably, um, four by three. And, uh, again, the pylon sign, which is, um, eight square foot each side, so I don't know what else they're doing, I have not seen that.
So, and Clark's been reviewing this a lot, but are there two monument signs in front of the property or all the business contained on one eight by three?
Everyone's on one sign.
And so they're just popping out the panels when the names change?
Exactly.
And Color Pro isn't asking for any additional facade signs?
Nope.
Yeah, so, I mean, we, I think we're good, like, I think we have all the information we need, I'm comfortable bringing a resolution if you guys want.
And I'm comfortable with having a resolution, uh, and then again, and the town will have up-to-date documentation and everything will be, and, you know, no issues. And that's, and that's why we do this, to identify any potential problems, uh, to make sure we can mitigate those before we actually, uh, um, have a change of tenant, but, uh, it seems like this is a nice, easy one, Mr. Fusco. So, okay, what's, what's in, uh, B, is that, you have offices in there also, just out of curiosity, what else is in the building?
Uh, well, we're B, yeah, Fusco Realty is our offices. So we're in the, in the back of the building and on the other side, behind the State Farm is Suite B, and that's where the church is. The church, uh, is occupied by the former Curves, uh, women's, uh, gymnastics area. And, um, we didn't do anything there, it's just a wide-open room with, uh, one unisex bathroom.
Yeah, I got on Google, like, that popped up about the church and it confused me, so I'm glad you mentioned that and I understand a little bit better, so. Great, now, everything looked good, the building looks good, you know, so.
Thank you.
All right, so unless anybody else has, from the board has any concerns, we'll have a resolution for next meeting, uh, approving the tenant changes at, uh, forty seventeen State Street and, uh, we all set, okay? Any questions, Mr. Fusco or anybody from the board?
Nope.
All right, well, thank you for your time, Mr. Fusco, and, uh, Mr. Henry will be in touch, you make sure he has everything he needs, uh, or Laura, in order to prepare the resolution and we'll, uh, get you a copy or I'll make sure you know that it's posted on the webpage, next meeting is July thirteenth, okay?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Bye now.
All right, good night. All right, and the last discussion item is twenty-five, excuse me, twenty-five sixty-five Balltown Road, Site Plan Review Application for a new monument sign at the Schenectady Jewish Community Center. And, um, I know we have, uh, at least, uh, looking at the people that are Saxon signs, and I'm not sure who's, who's there, but we do have a representative of the applicant. And, um, and I, so I, I think, uh, what I'll do is, uh, instead of, I speak, I talk a lot, is let the applicant state what's going on there and review that for the board, how's that?
I believe Laura was gonna call Neil Goleb.
Yeah, I just texted him, so hopefully he'll be able to join us, I'll see if I can get him on. He had some problems, we had some problems connecting earlier this afternoon, but he does wanna join the meeting if possible and just speak about the sign as well.
Well, he can jump in anytime if he's called in. Okay, what we wanna do is, we wanna beautify the area up there at the Jewish Community Center by replacing the old monument sign, the new monument sign. And also do landscaping and stone around the sign, and not only around the sign, they're, they're going to do landscaping for the neighbors. They're gonna put two pine trees in, in the bed of, um, flowers, as you see, that's what we proposed. And the sign itself is gonna be sixty-eight inches tall by eight foot wide overall, so we internally illuminated the faces as Schenectady JCC and Goleb Family Campus. And we're gonna have this electronic message sign, it's three foot by eight foot, and it's gonna mimic the old-fashioned interchangeable signs. But it's gonna make it easy so they don't have to go outside and lose letters and doing ice and snow and just do it from inside in a computer. And they're never gonna program the sign to flash or move or scroll or anything, it's just gonna be the black letters on a white background, just like the existing sign has. Sign is set back twenty feet from the road, which I think they, they're allowed to be ten feet from the road. And, um, the overall height is gonna be ten foot, eight inches overall, but if you look at the landscaping, it's gonna appear to be under eight foot height because of the landscaping that's, um, around the sign, blocks it more than two feet of the bottom of the sign. And the total square foot is forty-five point three-three square feet.
Okay, um, uh, Laura, did you be able to get a hold of him, Laura? I, I could speak a little bit to this because I, um, I did have the opportunity, uh, being on the Economic Development, Historic Preservation and Environmental Conservation Committee, um, I don't know if, um, a representative of Saxon signs, what's your name again, sir?
Pat Boni.
Uh, did you attend that meeting?
Yes, yes, I did.
Okay, I thought you looked familiar, yeah, it was you, Mr. Fattigan and Mr. Goleb, uh, attended that meeting, uh, where they kinda basically, uh, briefed us, um, what the, the thought was here to kinda get some, I don't wanna say buy-in or, you know, at least get it, hear us out, uh, any concerns that we had, that was, uh, pre-COVID, I can't remember when that meeting was, but probably February, maybe, January. Uh, and then, of course, everything, uh, changed, uh, after that. Um, I know that when I went into that meeting, I was concerned, uh, because, you know, electronic sign that raises flags, um, because that's one thing that, you know, is that, um, we're cautious with, uh, uh, there are some out there, but, um, uh, from, I guess, uh, personnel that were exempt or properties that were exempt, uh, so we're always careful with signs. But I was glad to hear from, uh, Mr. Goleb that the intention is not to, uh, you know, having a flashing sign and having, you know, uh, pictures of what's going on today and it constantly changing, because that's one thing that we, we think is, uh, visually destructive to drivers and it's, you know, and it's not aesthetically pleasing, um, and we didn't wanna set precedent in the town by having a lot of, uh, uh, LED signs that have motion and everything. So I was, I was glad to hear at that meeting, uh, Mr. Goleb stating that they would do everything possible to come in compliance the best they could with the code, um, by not allowing it to flash and change and basically having the sign, I believe it's about the same size as the existing sign, and basically cleaning up the area, but what it would, would, would allow them to do is be able to change what's on the sign, um, uh, remotely without having to all put letters up on the sign. Um, I know that you, you gave, uh, at that meeting, you also gave us a sample of the intensity of the LEDs, and I believe you stated that, uh, would vary, illumination would be low and it would be controllable, I recall.
They are dimmable.
Yeah, they're dimmable, so, um, so I came out of that meeting, I'm pretty happy, um, you know, compared to where, where I was when I went into the meeting. So I just wanted to summarize that for the other board members that didn't have that opportunity. So I felt pretty good that, um, the applicant was going to, uh, do everything possible to, um, and, and agree to whatever the board put forth, um, to minimize the impact and potential, uh, uh, precedent set by the sign. So, but Neil, uh, Mr. Goleb would be best to explain, uh, all that, um, and, and the basis for it, and it looks like he may have joined. So we'll, we'll check with Laura to see how it's going here.
And Neil did tell me they're not gonna change it any more than twice a week, at most.
All right.
Yeah, Neil, that, Neil did just join by phone, Neil, if you can hear us, you came in muted. And I believe if you press star six on your phone, it'll hopefully unmute you. I know, I know, member Jengus, you had that problem when you came, the star six wouldn't work for you, right?
Yeah, because it had to do with which number you actually came in on.
So, um, I, I can probably, I can give his phone, his cell phone a call and just put him on speaker, which I know we've done before, um. Let me just see if I can get him on the line, I think it is important for him, he does wanna be called on, guys.
Okay, and I, well, meantime, I'm just trying to find, it's in the packet, so last item in our packet that we received.
So, so Chairman Walsh, I just wanted to let you know, and, you know, in the meantime, as Mr. Goleb's coming on, so the thing I want us to discuss is obviously the concept of precedent that you refer and that you touched on. Because, you know, we, we have that corridor, you know, signs come up there all the time, the professional building in the corner had recently gone through a sign. had recently gone through a sign change. And so, um, you know, I think, I think we'll need to look a little bit more carefully at the at the precedent to get set now by allowing an, an electronic sign regardless of whatever self-imposed limitations the owner's gonna have, right?
Right. No, I, I agree, and um, uh, and if there are, uh, if, if there is a way to uh make this happen, it wouldn't just be left up to the owners. We would make sure that we would document, you know, um, the operational, um commitments, I guess, uh, for the sign, and not just take the applicant's word, you know?
It does present an interesting question, though, when you can create signs digitally that basically mimic what a, you know, a non-digital sign looks like.
Yeah.
I think when we've, when we've discussed this before, not advocating in favor of this necessarily, we've talked about it before. I think we've had an idea of what we think digital looks like. But is it, do we look at it differently? This is sort of an ongoing question, or maybe even a question for like town, changing town code purposes. Is it different if you can basically have it look like it's hand, if it's, you know, being hand-done? Obviously keep with the same principles about, um, the same principles about not, no flashing.
Yeah, so Mr. Boney, I think definitely one of the things that I'd like to see, and hopefully you have the ability to show it, is if we can actually see a video of where this kind of sign is, maybe somewhere else? Or where, if the manufacturer produces it?
We could bring a sample into, you know, to the meeting if we had to, if we can ever come to a meeting.
It's almost like I've seen them on the highway before too, like they mimic speed limit signs. Like there's might be, where you, where you like a, I mean, again, I'm not sure if this is the exact same thing. But I think I've seen something on like the New Jersey Turnpike where you have an exit sign or you have a, you have a a um, speed limit sign that almost looks like the real thing, except it's digital.
Right, well, you could, like, the thing is, with this, they're mimicking, you know, interchangeable letters. So that, all they have to do is type in the letter, black and white, and it's gonna look that way. Make it look hand-painted. They change it. They'd have to have like the art department or marketing department to do that. I'm not, I don't know if they have that or not. They really wanted to look like that, that existing sign. They don't want it to look like hand-painted. They want it to look like an interchangeable sign.
Yeah, so, um, and, and we talked about it, the way that it'll have to meet code is by essentially, our code doesn't prohibit LED signs. It prohibits flashing and scrolling. Yeah, time and temperature and stuff, so if we can set the resolution in such a way that it's not opening the door for LED signs and we're being really clear that it's more similar to a time and temperature sign that really doesn't change and flash and scroll, like a gas station sign. I think that's where we, we landed. I do have Neil on the line. He's on speaker. Neil, do you wanna say anything?
Yes, yes, I do. We've, we've tried very hard to make this something very special, not only Jewish Community Center, for entity as a whole. This corner has long been an ugly corner. When my Jane passed last year, she left money to have a beautiful garden put out in front of the Jewish Community Center, and all we wanted was a very simple sign. Today, with electronic signs, the sign can look almost like what it looks like now with block letters. It enables the people to make adjustments. We've agreed to, not more than twice a week. Um, also, it serves a purpose too. If there's ever an emergency on Balltown Road, uh, the town can request of the Jewish Community Center to, to, to change a sign that says, you know, the bridge is closed or accident ahead, uh, please turn around. I mean, there's a lot of things that can happen, but we've agreed to make it very specific based on your request. Changing it twice a week, their block letter, they look about like they look now, but they're cleaner and fresher and more easily seen than what's there now, and it's a clean, fresh sign. And there'll be a beautiful garden in front. We've gotten the neighbors and talked with them to allow us with uh Mr. Fattigan, Fattigan's Nursery, to, to clear up some of that ugly debris that sits in front of the center. You know, there's a lot of dead trees in that forest just adjacent. And we cleaned out, uh, you know, a bunch in the front, so that we could make a beautiful garden and uh have that very simple sign for the center. That's all we wanna do, in Jane's memory.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Goleb. Hey Laura, is there, is this, is, is there any waiver of potential for the planning board in this application?
Um, I will still look into it, but we typically do not have waiver abilities in our two-zone. Um, because it's pre-existing, non-conforming. If we can, I would love to bring us down that path, and I will look a little bit more. But I, I think that in all likelihood, it has to go to the zoning board. I'm comfortable, if you guys do like the way the sign looks, um, I can compress the timeline and probably get it on the July uh zoning board meeting, which is actually only almost, it's actually like two and a half weeks from now. Um, so I do think that we can work with a reasonable timeline on this if we need to, um. I'm in the direction.
Well, I mean, the, the, you know, we're, the zoning board, the month, uh, see, the June meeting is what, next week or whatever, right? I mean.
It's two days from now.
Two days from now. So we're, we're looking at, you know, if, you know, the board is in agreement, making a recommendation, um our, our, our next meeting is July thirteenth. Is, is ZBA after that meeting?
It is. I think it's July fifteenth.
Oh, boy. It's pretty tight, cause I, you know, it's one of the concerns, you know, that I had, you know, and I, I felt cause I attended that meeting uh pretty comfortable from what I heard. And I did see the sample that was brought into that meeting, but the rest of the planning board members have not had that opportunity that I had. Um, and I think um, um, the gentleman from Saxon Signs, I think you stated there's somewhere on Wolf Road that had a similar sign. I can't remember the business, but.
Cause that's Pioneer Bank, but that's a large sign and it's a lot brighter.
It's Pioneer Bank on Wolf Road?
Yeah.
You know, and uh, and I, and I agree with Mr. Khan, and, and I'm sure, you know, the planning board members are concerned about setting precedent. So I, you know, so I don't wanna, why, why I, I'm concerned, like, I like projects to move along quickly. I wanna make sure we do it right this time too. Because it's so important um to the rest of the town. Uh, you know, we wanna see uh this model uh developed elsewhere, uh especially for like businesses where you, as Mr. Khan pointed out, uh, medical office building where you may have uh several different uh, you know, uh on there a sign out front, you know, different associates listed, you know, where this could develop, where other applications could come in, where they wanna see the name of everybody on there. And uh, so whatever we do here, we have to do it right. So that they don't uh have a flashing sign, so they only change it maybe twice a week and that, and that it looks good and that it's something that we can deal with for the whole community as a whole, so.
So, I completely agree with that. Um, it doesn't need to go to the zoning board if it stays um what the existing sign size is. They did propose it slightly larger, and if it needs to be slightly larger so that it can be seen from the road, and that's the reason for it to be larger, because it is kind of a small sign right now, um. I understand that, and maybe um Pat can just speak to that. If you do think you can shrink it down so it doesn't have to go to the zoning board, then it's just planning board approval. So the only reason it needs to go to the zoning board right now is the size.
Well, the existing size is four by seven, and this is five and a half by, by eight. We could probably pick up a few inches on the EMC. Well, the problem with EMC though is that they, they manufacture them in one-foot sections, so we'd have to go from three foot down to two foot.
Yeah, and it, I mean, it can be a readability if.
It's like what they have now, that's way too small. It's hard to read.
Yeah.
And you can't go two and a half. You have to go right from, you know, one foot squares where you buy the manufacturer's sign.
Yeah.
We could, could block out a bit of black, that's in the programming. You know, maybe block out five, six inches at the bottom if it's okay with Neil.
Yeah, I mean, I want you guys to do the sign that makes the most sense in the long term, that's gonna serve the needs of, you know, the long term. I just want you guys, you know, to notice that the size is different, and that's the only thing that's kicking up to the zoning board. I don't mind kicking it to the zoning board if the planning board is comfortable with that. Um, that's just the only reason that it has to go.
And what's a max size without going to the zoning board?
Would be just to replace the existing. So you have that square footage approved right now. And you can, you can change it around. Like, if your sign right now is four feet by seven feet, that's, I'm gonna do the math for me.
Yeah, twenty-eight. So, so, you know, Laura, so you could say it could be, you know, three by, whatever it is. Come out the same square footage, basically.
It doesn't have to, it doesn't have to be four by seven. It's the square footage that you have approved.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, um, yeah, and to Mr. Khan's, I mean, we can get out and take a look at the Pioneer Bank, but um um, is there, um, is there a way that we could um set, set up the display that you had that showed the uh, the LEDs at a location where we could you know, drive by or something along those lines, or at your office or somewhere?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, and I was also looking, who, could you also listen to who the manufacturer designed it? So this is classed as an EMC sign, right, EMC?
It's Watchfire.
Say that again?
Watchfire. If you can go online, Google.
Yeah, but, so, could you, could you say, I'm not getting the name clearly. Watch what?
Watchfire.
Watchfire?
Yeah.
Okay.
They have a portable truck that they can bring to your site if you want, or to our shop, wherever you wanna meet. Or we could even bring it to the location of where the sign's going, so you can drive up and down the road.
Yeah, I think, I think that would be important for the, like I said, I did see the display before. I think that would be important for the board members um, to do that. Um, it's, I mean, is, where are you located, uh, sir?
We're in Skodak.
Yeah, Skodak. But it'd be, it'd be, I don't know, if that's something we could bring it over to Town Hall and park it in the parking lot over there and uh.
Town Hall, yeah.
You know, at some, uh, and I would think it would be better um dusk or, or night so that you could actually see, you know, how powerful the illumination is.
And you can dim it, we can dim it down right in front of you.
I think the concern during, during the day, you know, it, obviously it's gotta be strong enough to see. And so it's, it minimizes the impact of the sunlight, you know, of.
Automatically when it gets dark out at night.
It does, it does dim automatically?
Yeah, when it gets dark out.
Yeah. Laura, is that something that we can do? You think that's appropriate?
Yeah, definitely set that up. Yep, that's no problem. I can.
And if you can email out too what the exact specs, I'm on their site. And there are a bunch of different signs, obviously, so um if you can let us know which one specifically, we could take a look at it on the web too.
If you, if you look at Google Maps too, you can see, look at Pioneer Bank Wolf Road, although that's that, at least the Google map image they have is like the top of like a four-story building.
Yeah, and it's, and, and they go with the bright green and it kinda turned up all the way. But, and I think the sample in your parking lot's the best way to go.
Date and time that works for you to come um and put it there, Pat, and then we can, you know, the planning board to come and take a look at it.
Yeah, well, if you give me some dates, um, you're gonna wanna, it probably gets dark out late now, probably. If you could give me a couple of dates, I can call him tomorrow, find out when he's available for his truck.
Okay.
Because it's much better than the display we had in the office.
We were too close in the office.
That's why I agree.
Yeah.
And what he can do is he can block out, he can make it the same exact size that it's going to be. In the same way, you know, he can have the exact size, and we can turn the brightness down in front of you and then program for that, for that brightness.
I think that would be fantastic. Nothing better than, you know, to actually see what reality is versus, you know, trying to guess, you know, and then ending up with something that we didn't expect. Um, and I think that would help guard, you know, get the support of the board by actually being able to see that.
Yeah, I mean, so, so where I'm coming from with it is that if we look, everything about this makes sense. The upgrade, the flower beds, making it nicer, et cetera. So if we were to approve this by definition, we're setting a precedent. And so, then, you know, these signs are gonna become more and more popular in the town. And I just wanna get an understanding of exactly, you know, how far they can go.
But they are approved now if you don't scroll, technically. You don't scroll.
That's the way our code reads, right? So that's the only reason that we're saying you don't need a waiver from that section. Um, but we kind of struggle with how we would enforce that, so we were saying that we would probably put a condition that, you know, it couldn't scroll, and then if we see scrolling or some of the neighbors complain about scrolling or flashing, then it would be an enforcement ac- action from the building department, cause you'd be violating our code.
You got it. Right. And plus, in, you know, like, even though you say you won't do that, you know, it's just the, the physical appearance of it, you know, the, the lighting and everything. It'd just be good for us to see, because again, it, you, you know, this may start something, right? You know? Cause it is convenient, you know, especially with, uh, the organization where you have different types of uh classes or events, you know, and you wanna change it a couple of times a week, you know, you're not the only one out there, so we wanna make sure we're good with it. So if you could work with Laura to set up a, a date and time, um, and then she'll get that out to the planning board members, and we'll do our best to support, you know, I know I'll be there. Um, and then we'll, you know, get a project lead, alright? And uh, we understand the uh, the need, we understand um where Mr. Goleb's coming from, and uh we know that it'll be a great asset to clean up that uh, that corner, you know, it'd be an improvement. It's just, uh, you know, as Mr. Khan has stated, it's just a precedent. We wanna make sure we're comfortable um with our decision, so. So, we, we can set that up and, and is there anything else we can talk about right now?
I think that's good. And Pat, if you just wanna reach out with sign sizes, we can figure out if it can or if we need a variance, and then we can set that timeline, um, you know, within the next couple of days.
I see how we can go down to seven foot wide, so I see what we'd be doing with square footage, but if it's one square foot bigger, we have to go for a zoning board?
Yeah, yeah, that's the way the code works.
Right, and if time's not of the essence, you know, you do the right thing. You wanna make sure it's seen and, and you wanna make sure it looks in the correct aspect ratio and all those kinds of things, right? So, you know, and I know it takes, uh, it's an extra step in the process, and the zoning board appeals only meets once a month, so you know, it's tough to get there, but if, if time is not of the essence, just do whatever the right thing is.
Yeah.
Alright, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave it here unless Mr. Goleb or, or anybody else has anything to say. Uh, let's just set that up and let's take a look at what you got.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Goleb. Anything else?
You know, I'm just hoping that we can get this done before winter.
We, we can get it done before winter, even with going to ZBA meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, definitely.
And uh, and the landscaping is not as bad during the fall.
Yeah, now we can get there.
My wife's goodwill put in the middle of a debate. If you would, please, gentlemen.
No, thank you. Any other questions from the board members or comments at all regarding this subject? Alright, we look forward to the, to the demonstration then, and thank you for your time tonight, everyone.
Thank you.
Alright, and then last thing, Laura, well, not last, but uh we got the reports. Uh, fourteen forty-eight Balltown Road, the Ace Hardware. I know we weren't able to have a resolution tonight. Uh, I think our recommendation from the Conservation Advisory Council is an open item. Is that correct? I'm mute, Laura.
Sorry. Yes, I, I, um, I know we called for a final resolution on Ace Hardware, and this is entirely my fault, but we had um brought Ace Hardware to CAC multiple times, but never taken action, and when they withdrew, um, it was withdrawn from CAC, and it just didn't occur to me to put them back on. I honestly thought they had gotten a recommendation from CAC, but they had not. So the earliest that we could get them on the CAC to get their recommendation, cause you guys do do a secret determination with this one, um, just cause they're changing the footprint of the building, um, is July first. And so they will be all set and ready to go by July thirteenth. It's another one where I don't really think we have very many outstanding issues. It's just a matter of making sure we have all the checkmarks in the box. So apologize for that one, um, talk to the applicants, and um, we will have them back to you guys on July thirteenth.
Okay, Laura, thank you. Do you have anything, anything else under reports, or does Alexis have anything tonight under reports?
Well, I just wanted to let you guys know because it did come up, um, maybe when will, will we be back to normal and theoretically, we may be able to start holding in-person meetings on July fifteenth. So our next planning board meeting will definitely still have to be virtual, but the meeting after that, we may be able to hold um, in town, in Town Hall with uh limited capacity on the, with the building, but typically, unless, you know, we're looking at something super controversial, we don't, the planning board doesn't typically, typically tip fifty percent occupancy on that room. So I'm, I'm thinking, and I'll keep you guys up to date, and Alexis has been on top of this and been really helpful. But we may be able to have an in-person meeting at the end of July, depending on how things go.
Yeah, and I'm working with the supervisor on getting reopening plans, and they'll be sent, sorry, Tyler's singing. They're comprehensive and in draft right now, address planning board and zoning board, and I mean, one of just the technicalities that we'll have to figure out operationally is just the uh mandatory thermo, um, temperature taking. We do have um thermometers, touch-free thermometers that we ordered. We just have to figure out who would be. We do have, um, thermometers, touch-free thermometers that we ordered. We just have to figure out who would be designated at, as doing that, you know, off hours. Um, cause I think right now it, during town operation hours, it's gonna be a staff member. Um, I guess, I don't mind doing it, but just we'll have to figure out logistics.
Sounds like we need a project lead for that one, huh?
We have more to come. But we're not working on it. It, it won't be virtual indefinitely. We are working on a plan where we all get to see each other and talk to each other again, so.
Yeah, I know. You might, you might wanna think twice about volunteering to do it. That's coming into contact with a lot of people.
Okay, Laura or Alexis, you have anything else under reports?
No, but the only other thing just to think about, and Jengus and I have talked about this, is, I mean, electronic packets work really good when, well, not really good. But they work pretty good when we're all sitting in front of our computer. It certainly does save a lot of paper. If you guys have thoughts on ways that when we are, you know, going back to our new normal in person, if there, you know, is a way that we can still do electronic packets. Um, it's just something to consider, so.
Any restrictions to bringing laptops in?
Mm-mm, nope.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there power, uh, with some of the meetings go along, but other, is there power under the, yeah?
I think there is, and I can look. I mean, if, if we all have the capability now to be pulling up stuff on our laptops. We all come with our laptops and plug them in and we can have the packet in front of us and. I mean, it's, it would be different, but it definitely would save a lot of paper and actually, you know, time for delivering and stuff like that. I haven't fully figured it out yet, but it's something to think about when we're sort of returning back to the way things were.
Yeah, one, one, one thing I run, go ahead, Mr. Khan.
No, I was just gonna say, Laura, it, it doesn't have to be a uniform thing. I think planning board members would still like to have a, um. That would still like to have a paper copy, you can do it, but if all of us don't want one, right? And we can get by with electronics, right? So like, I know. At this point, I'm pretty much all okay. The fact that you've posted it up and it's not emailed out anymore. I, I could probably survive well just doing it all electronically, but I don't think it has to be a uniform thing for every member of the planning board.
Yeah. One thing that I've noticed, and I don't know if anybody else runs into this, but the, uh, you know, the document, the package is very large. And so when you're trying to scroll through it, it, you know, it slows, and maybe it's, maybe it's my computer, it is a little old, but it, it slows down and it takes a while to load the maps. And then if you, you know, if you need to find something during the meeting, you're trying to scroll through and waiting for it to come up, right? It almost would make sense, it would seem to have, uh, different tabs for each project, because you can go to that tab and, and just open that one or dismiss it. And also, just to break it up a little bit, um, might make it, uh, a little bit easier to work online with, you know? Just a thought. Again, it might just be my computer, but seems like they're slow on opening up some.
Yeah, I, I've had, I've had a similar issue, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if there is a way by which you can literally have it in the body of the email. Where you can have different aspects of it that you can click to based upon which, you know, you know, ea- each thing coming up. I don't know if that's gonna create too much work though, but it's, I know I've done that for other work meetings where you have. Tabs in the email that bring you to a specific part of a large, much larger packet.
So you're not scrolling through like a hundred pages of SWIP to get to the next item? Yes.
Exactly. Are you, I, I, I mean, there is an IT person team for the town, right?
Oh, yeah, we have one man behind the curtain. Yes.
Yeah, okay, that person. So, so because actually, you know, and you could discuss this with him, but I think. The way that mitigates that issue is to actually, instead of doing PDFs, you actually just create a webpage.
So, yeah, at my old job, we definitely did not do one file. It was, um, we had agenda software. And it was all built into how you viewed it, and you would just click on the agenda item and then you would have all of the different attachments in the agenda. It was not hard to do. There's definitely software out there that does it for you. So you have the file structure set up and all you do is just say, okay, here it is, and then it goes.
I mean, it'll just require everyone to need to be online at the time, I think. Or maybe if there's some way to store the whole page as a local page.
But it definitely, because the big maps mess it up. So the big maps mess up your view. They move everything over. And people do struggle with seeing the packets online, even though we're putting them on. We can do it better. I definitely would like to do it better.
I thought maybe there could be a situation where you'd actually, at time of meeting, for those larger projects with larger format maps, eleven by seventeen. Did you print them for the board members of the, of the, of the meeting? So you wouldn't have to deliver them, but we'd have the map to refer to during the course of the meeting, and that would be really helpful to help speed up referrals.
Yeah, so that's actually what we used to do in my old job. We would do electronic packets and then do paper copies of the maps.
Yeah, and at least the, uh, uh, the cover page of the map, if, if a project lead needed, you know, all attachments. But at least the, the main page is handy, you know, really is.
Yep.
But those are, there's a good, good thoughts and, uh, I think Laura's got it. So I think we could get there though, Laura, you know? Any other?
Yeah.
I for one do not have a laptop to bring.
Yeah, so that's what Jengus is saying. It doesn't have to be for everyone, and that's what we did at my old job too. It's only if you wanna try.
Yeah. All right, you have anything else, Laura?
Well, if, well, I'm all done.
I'm not trying to rush you at all. Alexis had a sign off. So, um, commission business, uh, I'll go down the list. Mr. Oster, you got anything for us tonight?
Yeah, the only thing I wanna say is, just in general, it makes sure I'm not on mute. Nope, not on mute. Um, and it's, it's, I don't even think there's a good answer to it. It's, you know, you know, the board paint, does painstaking work. In terms of trying to make sure projects are done well and designed in a way that's gonna be, fit in well with the neighborhood. And I, I, I do think we, you know, it's, we don't have control over it, but I do think it's something that, you know, there's an enforcement aspect with all this. That we have to be mindful of. Um, I'm not talking to anyone specific, but like, you know, there have been instances. Where the, you know, either the town building department or the board approves something and then the developer does something. Not entirely consistent with that. And I know there's a process for enforcing that, but sometimes. You know, there's not, things go too far and you can't really, like, pu- put trees back up. So I guess what I, you know, would hope people will be mindful of is to make sure that where there's a history, that there is a monitoring of that. And being, and being attuned to that.
I, I, Mo, I agree with you, and specifically on the tree one, I have said it before. And I know it sounds a little more glib and serious, but I'm actually being serious. I think we need to put such a prohibitive fine. On cutting down trees outside of what's been approved, that no developer will ever do it again. You know?
I'm, I'm okay with that, and it's actually not terrible. I think we'd have to redo the tree code, cause right now it's five hundred dollars a tree.
Right, so if it's five thousand dollars a tree, I think it'd be very different behavior.
Again, there's a certain thing, I mean, you can, you can stop work order or something and then, you know, remediate something, but sometimes. Things can't be easily fixed.
No, agreed, and, and that's the point, right? That you're talking about something that is completely irreversible. And the only way enforcement deals with that is to ensure that it doesn't ever happen again.
Yeah, that's a good comment, Mr. Oster. I agree.
And, and look on the other side, we, we could buy a whole bunch of trees for five thousand bucks a tree.
Yeah, you can.
Yeah, some things you just can't put back, right? Once the damage is done. I agree with you. Anything else, Mr. Oster?
Nope, nope, I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Diarpino?
Nothing, nothing tonight.
Nothing, okay. And Mr. McPartland, how you doing?
Nothing for me, thank you.
All right. Mr. Khan, we'll go right down the list as usual.
Nothing.
No? And Mr. Scrubutennis?
Nothing.
Nothing. Mr. Leflam?
No, sir.
No? And Ms. Gold?
Nothing for me.
No? How about Ms. Shenfield?
No, nothing for me.
Okay. And all I got is one thing that I could think of, and it's real quick, uh, like you probably noticed, Jeff Wilkins retiring as the reporter. Uh, I believe Wednesday's his last day from what I read in the Gazette today, so I don't know if, uh, Mr. Wilkins is on or if he watches the meeting to take some notes. But, um, he's been, um, de- dedicated to our meetings and, uh, and he's been a good team player. Uh, so I just wanted to congratulate him on his, uh, upcoming retirement and wish him well. So, and we'll, we'll see who our new reporter is.
Yeah, thank you, Colonel Oster for bringing that up. It's a very, um, it's a very nice gesture. It's not the same thing when I read the article, so.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Khan. Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion adjourned by Mr. Khan, and it looks like it's seconded by Mr. Leflam. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Not hearing not opposed, we'll, uh, we'll call the, adjourn the meeting, uh, on six twenty-two, twenty twenty at nine forty-one PM. Thank you, everybody. Uh, it was a good working session. I appreciate it.
Thank you.